Good morning, ambassadors and alternate representatives. It's a great morning, and I'm sure you would prefer to be out seeing the cherry pink and apple blossom white. For that reason, it is all... We should all be more thankful that we have gathered here today to do serious business instead of enjoying ourselves. I am pleased to call this special meeting of the Permanent Council to order. It has been convened at the request of the permanent missions of Antigua and Barbuda, Bahamas, Barbados, Belize, Panama, Saint Kitts and Nevis, Saint Lucia, and Saint Vincent in the Grenadines in order to consider the topic Finance and Banking Services Challenges to Development in the Americas. Now, before we consider the items on today's draft order of business, I would like to give on behalf of the Permanent Council a warm welcome to our distinguished speakers. And if I may introduce them very quickly: Mr. Ryan Pinder, who is a member of parliament of the Bahamas; Dr. Farah Diva Uritia, have I got that right?
Yes.
Who is the Director General for Legal Affairs and Treaties of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of the Republic of Panama; Dr. Bruce Zagaris, who is a partner in the Washington DC firm of Berliner, Corcoran, and Roe; and Mr. Daniel Mitchell, Senior Fellow with the K2 Institute. I would also like to recognize and draw to your attention the fact that we have a very distinguished Caribbean personality in our midst this morning: the former Attorney General and Chief Justice of the Bahamas, Sir Michael Barnett. Sir Michael, he... Sir Michael will be an observer at our proceedings today. Now, distinguished speakers, you are all welcome to this House of the Americas. I would now like to submit for consideration of this council the draft order of business, which is document CP OD dot two zero six two stroke sixteen. And if there are no objections to the draft order of business as proposed, we shall proceed to adopt it. I see no objection. Adopt it. Distinguished colleagues, the topic before us, Finance Banking Services Challenges to Development in the Americas, is of great importance to the fourteen CARICOM member states and to countries in Central America. The financial services sector of these countries have been under assault for over a decade in one form or another, creating problems for their efforts to build their economies, to create employment, and to alleviate poverty. They have been labeled as tax havens and accused of lax regimes for money laundering and anti-terrorism financing. Yet, in all of the instances where banks and other financial institutions have had to pay huge penalties for such matters, no CARICOM or Central American country has been involved. Further, despite their extremely scarce resources, these jurisdictions have invested heavily in costly software for detecting money laundering and counter-terrorism financing. They have also adhered strictly to the recommendations of the Financial Action Task Force on Money Laundering and Anti-Terrorism Financing, and to the requirements of the Global Forum of the Organization for Cooperation in Economic Development on Tax Matters. And even though they have been wrongly labeled as tax havens, they have tax information exchange agreements in place with every major country in the world by which tax information is provided on request. The reason that this matter is being raised in the organization of American states is that more than half of the member states of this organization are adversely affected. I'll repeat that: more than half of the member states of this organization are adversely affected. One of the seminal principles of the charter of this organization is that, and I quote it, "economic cooperation is essential to the common welfare and prosperity of the peoples of the continent." We are better then than the organization of American states to raise an issue that confronts so many of our people. Our purpose, therefore, is to find a common ground on which our member states can work together to find fair and balanced solutions to this matter. In this regard, a number of countries have proposed a draft declaration, which has been submitted for possible adoption by this distinguished council. We have, as I said, assembled a panel of four distinguished experts, who will give us the benefit of their knowledge and considerable experience. I am confident that all delegations will benefit from the understanding of the issues that they are well qualified to impart. But before I invite the speakers to make their presentations, I would like to invite the Chairman of the CARICOM Caucus, Ambassador Patrick Andrews, to explain on behalf of CARICOM the serious challenges that confront CARICOM and Central American countries. Ambassador Andrews, you have the floor.
Assistant Secretary General Nestor Mendez, Chairman of the Permanent Council, Sir Ronald Sanders, and distinguished and invited guests, excellences and alternates. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to explain on behalf of the fourteen member states of the Caribbean community, CARICOM, why several of our member states requested this meeting of the Permanent Council on the finance and banking challenges to development in the Caribbean. The current Chair of the CARICOM Heads of Government, the Prime Minister of Belize, the Right Honourable Dean Barrow, at a summit meeting last month described the challenges that confront CARICOM countries in the financial services sector as existential. It was an observation with which all CARICOM Heads of Government agreed, because for several years, despite the full compliance of our member states with the requirements of international bodies, and in spite of bilateral agreements with the OECD member states, several of our jurisdictions have been wrongly described by a few states as tax havens, or countries of concern for money laundering. However, at the international level, through regular reviews of our countries, our countries have all been assessed to be in compliance with the recommendations of the Financial Action Task Force on Money Laundering and Counter-Terrorism Financing, and with the requirements of the Global Forum on Taxation of the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development, the OECD. What is more, all of our jurisdictions are subject to annual appraisals by the International Monetary Fund, including our anti-money laundering and counter-terrorism financing regimes. At the bilateral level, all of our countries have entered tax information exchange agreements with major nations in Europe and North America, under which tax information is provided on request. Nonetheless, Mr. Chairman, recently indigenous banks in all fourteen CARICOM states and offshore banks in several of them, have found that banks in North America and Europe with which they have done business for many decades, have been cutting off correspondent relations that are crucial to their survival and to the economies of our countries. It is against this background that CARICOM Heads of Government meeting in Belize last month issued the following statement: Heads of government deplored the progressive decline in correspondent banking relationships available to the banking sector in member states as a result of derisking strategies employed by the global banks. They opine that the withdrawal, restricted access, and/or higher cost of such services, allegedly in response to the heightened regulatory posture of regulatory authorities, would destabilize the financial sector in member states with deleterious effects on growth and economic progress, as well as national security. Mr. Chairman, by way of further explanation of this grave issue that deeply concerns the fourteen CARICOM member states and other states in Central America, I draw attention to a statement on derisking and correspondent banking delivered at the Committee on Trade in Financial Services of the World Trade Organization by CARICOM states just twelve days ago, on eighteenth of March. The statement is as follows: Correspondent banking, which can broadly be defined as the provision of banking services by one bank, the correspondent bank, to another bank, the respondent bank, is essential for customer payments, especially across borders, and for access of banks themselves to foreign financial systems. The ability to make and receive international payments via correspondent banking is vital for businesses and correspondent banking individuals. Correspondent banks are private sector institutions that pursuant to recommendations issued by the Financial Action Task Force, FATIF, are required to evaluate risks when doing business with other banks and jurisdictions. The practice of ending banking relationships with clients or closing accounts deemed to be of high risk is referred to as derisking. According to a statement by the FATIF on October 2014, derisking refers to the phenomenon of financial institutions terminating or restricting business relationships with clients or categories of clients to avoid, rather than to manage, risk in line with the FATIF's risk-based approach. Derisking can be the result of various drivers, such as concerns about profitability, prudential requirements, anxiety after the global financial crisis, and reputational risk. To mitigate against this negative impact, some global banks opted to exit whole business lines that carry increased risk, instead of improving risk management and controls and evaluating customers individually. It appears that several global banks have concluded that the potential downsides of maintaining certain businesses deemed high-risk, for example, money services businesses, third-party payment processes, outweigh the possible benefits. Throughout 2015, the situation further deteriorated as a number of international banks terminated correspondent banking relations with several banks in the Caribbean. This has had a significant impact on products and services widely used by CARICOM financial institutions, such as cheque clearing, clearing and settlement, cash management services, international wire transfers, and trade finance. A survey conducted by the World Bank over the period April to September 2015 on the decline in correspondent banking services indicated that foreign exchange services and foreign currency bank note services have been affected. The survey also indicated that the client segments most affected are money services operators and remittance companies. Further, the survey revealed that the decline in correspondent banking services occurred in varying degrees across Latin America and the Caribbean, Africa, East Asia and the Pacific, Europe and Central Asia and the Middle East. The report also highlighted the main drivers and/or causes of the actions by the global banks, and confirmed that roughly half of the emerging market and developing economy jurisdictions surveyed have experienced a decline in correspondent banking relationships and are under threat of exclusion from the global payment system. Such declines were reported in particular in small jurisdictions with low volumes of businesses, transactions, as well as those with significant offshore banking activities. However, despite full compliance with regulatory practices recommended by FATIF and global forum standards and certification by peer reviews, international transactions in those countries that scrupulously apply these measures are still being considered to be at risk for violating national sanctions and prohibitions in certain jurisdictions. The financial services sector, and specifically banking, continues to be a vital sector for the development of the Caribbean economies. Indeed, financial services is the second-largest contributor to gross domestic product GDP in the Caribbean region after tourism. Already, the countries of the CARICOM region are experiencing challenges in integrating into the global economy by virtue of their size, susceptibility to external shocks, and fragility and vulnerability of their small economies. This termination of correspondent banking relations is, therefore, a worrying development, as it has the potential to threaten the region's economic stability and capacity to remain properly integrated into the global financial, trade, and economic systems. Closure of correspondent banking accounts presents a tangible threat to international trade finance, particularly for developing countries in the Caribbean and elsewhere at a time when they are recovering from the 2008 global financial and economic crisis. For developing economies, this can have a significant impact on economic growth. The research has been done by the WTO reveals that over eighty percent of global trade relies on trade finance. If developing countries like those in the Caribbean do not have access to trade finance, they are in a disadvantaged position. Derisking practices have profound economic and humanitarian consequences, particularly those related to interruptions in global remittance flows. Any reductions in these flows would have a clear and tangible impact on countries where remittance accounts for a significant portion of their GDP. Numerous reports have highlighted the personal and dire repercussions of any curtailment of remittance flows, including family members' inability to pay for their health care, food, housing, and school fees and purchase of goods in commerce. With the closure of correspondent banking relationships at many major financial institutions, affected respondent institutions have been forced to rely on smaller overseas banks and credit unions that may not have adequate capacity to deal with higher-risk customers. Mr. Chairman, that is the essence of this statement made a few days ago at the WTO Organization meeting by CARICOM. We have repeated it here because it explains the large measure why we have introduced the matter to this Permanent Council. The Charter of the Organization of American States, Chapter One, Article Two, enjoins our member states to promote by cooperative actions their economic, social, and cultural development. By introducing this matter to the Permanent Council and by proposing a declaration on it, the proposers from CARICOM and Central America seek no more than the fulfillment of obligations to each other that the OAS Charter has established. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Ambassador Andrews. Now, we will turn to the four speakers who have kindly agreed to talk with us today. In order to use more efficiently the time allotted to the meeting, I propose that we have a session of questions after the intervention of the second speaker, and then another session following the presentation of the fourth speaker. And if there are no objections to that, I suggest we proceed accordingly. I see no objection, so we will proceed on that basis. Now, colleagues, I'd like to introduce the first speaker, who is Mr. Ryan Pinder. He's a member of parliament of the Bahamas. He served as Minister of Financial Services and Trade from May 2012 to January 2015, before joining the firm Graham Thompson as a partner. He received his undergraduate and graduate degrees from the University of Miami and the University College of Law, including LLM, JD, MBA, and BBA. As Minister of Finance, Services, and Trade in the Bahamas, Mr. Pinder played an integral role in positioning the Bahamas as a leading financial services center. Such experiences included the development of new legislation for products and structuring opportunities, and the negotiation of the Bahamas' position with respect to transparency matters such as FATCA and the OECD Common Reporting Standard. Mr. Pinder also advises governments on international policy matters related to the cross-border international financial services industry. I am very pleased to ask Mr. Pinder to speak.
There we go. Thank you so much and good morning. As mentioned, my name is Ryan Pinder, and I'm a current member of parliament and former Minister of Financial Services in the Bahamas, and now in private practice with the law firm Graham Thompson. And today I've been asked to address the effect on the Caribbean region of the withdrawal of correspondent banking within the region, as well as derisking in general of banks within the Caribbean. And I want to thank the ambassador for Belize for his intervention and rather comprehensive statement on the matters that exist. These practices of which we discussed today have been underway in the Caribbean region for some time, but recently have gained momentum, causing significant harm and future threat to the economic viability of the region. This, despite the Caribbean region and the countries therein having undertaken necessary efforts to comply with all FATF requirements with respect to anti-money laundering and counter-terrorism financing requirements, and having implemented the OECD standards and requirements with respect to the transparency of information, and ultimately assured compliance with US transparency matters such as FATCA. And in many of these regards, countries within the Caribbean have been rated at higher standards than many countries within the G20 and large economy countries throughout the world. I think it important to properly define again today, so we know what we're speaking about, the matters of correspondent banking and derisking that we're experiencing in the Caribbean. As alluded to, correspondent banking is the provision of current account and related services to another financial institution for the execution of third-party payments. So, for example, it's when one financial institution has an account in a foreign currency with another financial institution to process transactions for their clients. Derisking is the contraction or the termination of banking or financial services in the region as a result of a concern that a customer or a partner in that particular region, in this case we speak about the Caribbean, could pose higher-than-average risk for money laundering or terrorism financing, or that the cost-benefit analysis that those institutions do do not justify the risk, and in many instances do not justify the perceived risk, because in fact the risk itself may not actually exist. This derisking is happening throughout the Caribbean, in all affected countries, and in fact throughout the entire Latin American region as well. And frequently, the economic reasons for derisking are directly connected to the regulatory and the compliance reasons and the costs associated with them. The World Bank has recently conducted a survey of the decline in correspondent banking. This survey found that more than half of the local banking institutions have experienced a decline in correspondent banking relationships. Again, more than fifty percent of the local banking institutions have experienced a decline. And that seventy-five percent of the large banks, these are the banks that provide the correspondent banking services, have reduced their relationships: seventy-five percent. This is a dramatic contraction in the regional financial services industry throughout the world, but specifically within the Caribbean and Latin America. This policy of derisking by institutions has the potential to wreak severe damage on our Caribbean economies. In fact, we've already begun to see the effects of this initiative. See, we have to understand as a baseline: financial services provide the lifeblood of an economy, and especially within the Caribbean. Ensuring that correspondent banking exists is key to the region's financial indicators, and we heard these earlier: trade financing, foreign direct investment, tourism, international financial services, and remittances to home countries. As the World Bank has stated, financial inclusion is a key enabler for reducing poverty and boosting prosperity, and we see that even more so in small economies throughout the Caribbean region. And we see the reverse of that when you start to see the contraction and the reduction of correspondent banking. And while international financial institutions have been working together, and with Caribbean countries, to increase this financial inclusion, derisking and the consequent withdrawal of banking services risks only taking us backwards and alienating the entire Caribbean This would have irreversible effects on the economic welfare of our people throughout the Caribbean. Not only are there clear economic retrenchments occurring as a result, occurring today, currently as a result of this, but this entire retraction in financial services that we see throughout the Caribbean region will drive transactions and currency flows to less transparent and more risky alternatives. Again, that's an important statement. As we see retraction in correspondent banking, in other words, as we see an inability for our institutions, our businesses, our people throughout the Caribbean to actually conduct transactions in foreign currency, we will see those transactions move to more less-transparent alternatives, and more alternatives that are more susceptible to the anti-money laundering and counter-terrorism financing risks that we work so hard to protect within our financial institutions throughout the region. Remittances are a key component of economic development in the Caribbean. They are usually conducted by international wire transfers or cash management services, cheque clearing and settlement, areas directly affected by the withdrawal of correspondent banking and derisking. Studies have found strong relationships between remittances to home countries and those countries' economic development. For example, a ten percent increase in per capita remittances yields a three-and-a-half percent decline in the share of people living in poverty. That is a tremendous correlation, and if you take away the ability for remittances to occur because of a retrenchment in correspondent banking, the reverse will happen. You will see... banking, the reverse will happen, you will see poverty increase dramatically through the Caribbean region. And as poverty increases, so does instability of the economies and countries we speak about. In the Caribbean itself, and this is only an official number, more than $10 billion a year happen in remittances. And that is likely to be much larger, and certainly if you factor in countries such as Cuba, it will be significantly more so. We know that the Caribbean region itself depends on inbound trade from the US, and without corresponding banking services, this is not only put at risk but could be eliminated entirely. The region also depends heavily on tourism and foreign direct investment, both elements of an economy that require the ability to transact in foreign currency. Both of these economic platforms for the Caribbean are directly affected by correspondent banking, not only with US institutions, but this is an issue that is global. The European Union, the United Kingdom, Canada, this is a global issue as well. The effect on the international financial services industry is paramount. This is an industry that in my country, the Bahamas, has single-handedly created the middle class, elevating much of our population from poverty, and creating an internationally well-regarded and educated professional class throughout the Bahamas. We have recently seen a shift in our industry, away from global multinational banking institutions, and towards private banking, independent institutions. And this in and of itself is allowing for Bahamian entrepreneurs to be a part of an industry that for a long time was exclusively a foreign-owned industry. The threat itself of a loss of correspondent banking relationships to these independent banks in the Bahamas is creating an elevated level of difficulty to do business, elevated costs to do business, and in some institutions closures of entire business lines within those institutions. All of this has a direct effect on an element of the economy of the Bahamas, the second contributor to our gross domestic product, and a lifeline industry for the economic welfare of our people. In the face of the current practice of de-risking, the Caribbean region has undertaken a diplomatic campaign against the contraction of correspondent banking, and generally has focused primarily here in the United States. This focus has its origins in the United States because the United States is the largest trading partner for the Caribbean region. And the fact that United States institutions have led the world in contraction of correspondent banking, and some of the more dramatic contraction within our region has been as a result of United States banks. So these diplomatic initiatives by CARICOM and members of the CARICOM community would include: the Caribbean Association of Banks raising the issue to the CARICOM heads of government last year in February 2015; recent visit by Prime Minister Dean Barrow of Belize to Washington to meet with senior officials of the United States government and with US banking monitors, following the announced exit of Bank of America from Belize; formation of a committee of ministers of finance on correspondent banking, which is chaired by Antigua and Barbuda's Prime Minister, Gaston Brown. The mandate of this ministerial committee is to represent CARICOM's interest at all levels, including the United Nations, the World Trade Organization, and the United States Congress. This committee of ministers of CARICOM is supported by the Committee of Central Bank Governors, the Caribbean Association of Banks, and the Caribbean Financial Action Task Force. This in and of itself should demonstrate the severity of this issue within the region. A committee of ministers of finance chaired by a prime minister, who is supported by regulators, the central bank of the region, supported by the private sector, the Caribbean Association of Banks, and supported by the regional institution that is supposed to measure whether countries are complying with their anti-money laundering and counterfinance terrorism standards, a collective regional approach to this issue. If that doesn't demonstrate the severity of this issue to our survivability as a Caribbean, I don't know what does. CARICOM has also initiated a plan of action with specific initiatives that have been presented to the heads of government, and more recently, as mentioned, a statement on de-risking and correspondent banking delivered by Jamaica on behalf of the Caribbean community to the World Trade Organization Committee on Trade and Financial Services. The initiatives of the Caribbean region to date have been good, but also largely diplomatic in nature. The loss of correspondent banking and de-risking is a difficult and complex issue that extends beyond diplomacy. Specific initiatives must not only be developed, but they must be tested for their viability, and then viable alternatives advanced with the public sector, the private sector, and domestic and international regulatory bodies. Many constituent parties, including the World Bank, the Caribbean Policy Research Institute, and even the policymakers of CARICOM, have all given their suggestions as to the way forward and recommendations as to preserving correspondent banking in the region. Some recommendations attempt to address the economic challenges, while others attempt to provide an objective framework for a transparent and predictable risk-based regulatory framework. While all interesting ideas, it is my belief that they are not all equally viable. For example, regional political leaders have expressed an interest in forming a regional US bank to provide regional banking clearing services and consolidating the financial institutions of the region into one entity. In my opinion, this might not be the best option, as it will require extensive regulatory approvals, and there's no guarantee that the US bank itself would not require correspondent banking relationships. And in that, you've found yourself right in the same position you were, your correspondent bank wanting to look through your institution to know the risks associated with the clients. Another proposal from certain political leaders is that for the region to buy insurance to cover any fines that a correspondent bank might incur. See, part of the de-risking is that the correspondent banks are fearful of fines by their regulators that have been growing exponentially, it seems, by the day. But who offers such insurance? Who's going to be responsible for the premiums? How do you estimate these potential fines when every day it seems like the fines are getting larger and larger? This is a difficulty with this proposal, in my opinion. I believe that institutions such as this institution here today, the OAS, as a collective multilateral policy body, should look to formulate recommendations for standardization and internationally-accepted regulation based upon objective risk frameworks. That's important because a lot of the risk frameworks that these institutions look at are based on perception and subjective opinions, and do not have an objective basis. So some examples would include rules requiring "know your customer's customer." This is an initiative that is now forthcoming amongst the institutions but is not based in law. To when does an institution have to know the customer of their customer that they're doing the transaction for? That is what is causing some of this friction. So we need some objective criteria for when that is in fact the right thing to do and not the appropriate thing to do. This is a concern, as I said, because as a matter of law and regulation, it's not required. It will establish a level playing field for the evaluation of the risks of these institutions. We may want to establish longer timeframes when a correspondent bank withdraws, giving that institution in our region adequate time to find a replacement and not be caught in a situation where it can no longer do currency transactions. Currently, our institutions in the Caribbean are giving a very short time to respond, many times less than 30 days. This is unacceptable business practice, and this does not allow the region to address the underlying reasons why the correspondent banks are leaving, because they do not tell you, they just leave. I think preparation of guidelines and internationally-accepted policies on anti-money laundering is important, and to do a country-by-country objective rating. See, in many instances, what happens is if there's one institution in one country that falls afoul, that correspondent bank will exit the entire country, not just that one institution, putting the entire country in a precarious situation. And we're seeing it go even further. If one institution in one country experiences a precarious situation, that bank, the correspondent bank, doesn't just leave that institution, doesn't just leave that country, leaves the entire Caribbean region, when countries within that region can be rated higher than the country where that correspondent banking bank is coming from. These objective criteria are required. So this is a complex problem and requires input and coordination at a variety of levels. A framework and solution can be found, but can only be found through a concerted, multi-pronged approach involving all relevant stakeholders. Such an approach must be driven by a keen sense of scale of the problem and technical understanding. If we can lessen the regulatory cost and burden, we can clarify the penalty structure. If we can make more transparency and rulemaking, and support solutions that are technically viable, we can preserve the longstanding history of banking in the Caribbean region. We can preserve the economic viability of our countries for our children. It is through the leadership and concerted focus of institutions such as the OAS that is required to achieve this goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pinder, for that very comprehensive explanation of what the situation is in regard to correspondent banking. Now, I should simply mention that while Mr. Pinder focused on the Caribbean, and to some extent references to Central America, this problem is not limited to the Caribbean and Central America. It includes Latin America as a whole. It is a creeping cancer. The countries to which it has not yet reached, be assured it is coming there. And now, if I may, I'd like to offer the floor to Dr. Farah Diva Uritia, the Director-General for Legal Affairs and Treaties of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of the Republic of Panama. She is a graduate from the University of Santa Maria La Antigua in Panama, so that recommends you immediately, with a degree in law and political sciences. She also course doctorate studies in law in the Carlos III University in Madrid, graduating cum laude in 2003. During her professional career, she's occupied different positions in the public and private sectors, such as Sub-Direct of the Legal Advice Office of the National Public Services Authority, Executive Assistant to the Presidency of the Supreme Court in Panama, and Corporate and Legal Affairs Manager in Promega Biotech Iberica. Dr. Uritia, you have the floor. Thank you.
Muy buenos días, señores representantes de los estados miembros, autoridades de la mesa principal, expositores y asistentes a esta reunión especial convocada por el Consejo Permanente de la Organización de Estados Americanos a solicitud de las Misiones Permanentes de Antigua y Barbuda, Las Bahamas, Barbados, Belice, Panamá, San Kitzinnevis, Santa Lucía, y San Vicente y las Granadinas, con el objeto de considerar el tema desafíos en los servicios financieros y bancarios para el desarrollo de las Américas. En nombre de la República de Panamá, queremos agradecer la oportunidad que nos brinda este foro para exponer algunas de nuestras consideraciones en materia de servicios financieros y corporativos internacionales. Panamá ha sido desde sus orígenes, remontándonos a la época colonial y hasta la consolidación de la república, y debido a su privilegiada situación geográfica, una plataforma importante y exitosa del comercio de servicios. Esta característica ha hecho de Panamá un país con una economía de servicios abierta a atender las necesidades de la comunidad internacional y en particular de nuestra región. No obstante, es menester que se reconozca que su éxito ha estado fundamentado en la capacidad que ha tenido este centro de servicios financieros y corporativos de evolucionar ante las cambiantes necesidades de un mundo cada vez más globalizado. Es por ello que inicio estas palabras confirmando ante este foro el compromiso manifestado reiteradamente por Panamá de continuar adecuando su sistema financiero y corporativo a las legítimas expectativas internacionales. Es con el objeto de cumplir con este compromiso que nuestro país ha adoptado, previo consenso con los sectores involucrados, una legislación de vanguardia. Actualmente contamos con el marco legal, regulatorio, e institucional definido en el Plan de Acción para la Prevención del Blanqueo de Capitales, el Financiamiento del Terrorismo, y la proliferación de armas de destrucción masiva. Nuestro marco legal no solo regula adecuadamente nuestro sector financiero, sino que regula de igual manera aquellas otras actividades no financieras que pudieran ser utilizadas para cometer estas actividades criminales. Sin embargo, como un país orientado a la prestación de servicios, no dejamos de observar con mucha preocupación cómo, en base a las expectativas de algunos grupos de la comunidad internacional, se pretende generar y adoptar de forma universal estándares de impacto casi generalizados, imponiendo criterios que desconocen las realidades particulares de cada país, y que incluso atentan contra el derecho soberano de cada uno de ellos de determinar aquellas políticas en cumplimiento de los requerimientos en la materia, que mejor protejan los intereses nacionales y se adapten a la realidad de sus economías y de sus sistemas. En este sentido, vemos con mucha frecuencia cómo, con cierta ligereza en el análisis, pero fuerza en la decisión, se le imponen a países como el nuestro obligaciones que no han gozado del beneficio de un periodo apropiado de consultas, y que pretenden imponer cambios estructurales en nuestros sistemas sin adecuados periodos transicionales, y sin siquiera tomar en cuenta nuestras diferencias y condiciones económicas. Con igual sentido crítico, un país como Panamá tiene que cuestionar las razones para ser forzado a implementar cambios que implican un alto costo para el país, no solo para el mercado, sino también en infraestructura y burocracia institucional, sin que se tome en consideración el elemento de proporcionalidad que debe existir en el costo de la implementación de las medidas y el beneficio que pudiera obtenerse del mismo. Un beneficio que no necesariamente es universal ni va en ambas direcciones. No atender este sentido de proporcionalidad nos lleva, sin duda, autogenerarnos empobrecimiento sin una adecuada contraprestación para sustentarlo o reemplazarlo. Si lo anterior no fuera suficientemente lesivo a las economías de países pequeños, también debemos vivir con los efectos adversos de las medidas discriminatorias, impuestas unilateralmente por otros países en la búsqueda de ejercer la suficiente presión para que se adopten estándares de manera uniforme en realidades económicas totalmente equidistantes. Estas medidas discriminatorias no hacen otra cosa que afectar negativamente nuestras economías, generan barreras lesivas. generan barreras lesivas al comercio y afectan negativamente el ambiente de cooperación y consenso que debería regir en nuestros países. Así también, en el ámbito fiscal, algunos miembros de la comunidad internacional han optado por categorizar peyorativamente aquellas jurisdicciones que han escogido tener un sistema de tributación de renta territorial como paraísos fiscales, pretendiendo atribuirles de una manera injusta a estos países una responsabilidad directa por la omisión de sus contribuyentes en cumplir con sus obligaciones fiscales y, por ende, ejerciendo presión para que cumplan con modelos más cósonos con sus intereses en detrimento de los intereses y las realidades de estos últimos. Panamá ha sido claro en manifestar su compromiso de cumplir con criterios de mayor transparencia en materia fiscal. De hecho, en el marco de la Setenta Asamblea General de Naciones Unidas en Nueva York, el presidente de Panamá, Juan Carlos Varela, anunció el compromiso político del gobierno nacional hacia el objetivo del intercambio automático de información, recalcando que la negociación de acuerdos en materia fiscal sería bajo principios de bilateralidad, reciprocidad y sujeto a la existencia de salvaguardas que garanticen los derechos fundamentales de los propietarios de la información. No obstante, esta posición nos ha granjeado la consideración de país rebelde, foco de críticas por parte de quienes defienden los estándares de intercambio de información automático, aún cuando Panamá ha firmado más de veinte acuerdos de intercambio de información o que incluyen una cláusula de intercambio de información y que quizás sea de los países con mayor cantidad de convenios firmados, incluso más que países miembros de la OTTO. Y aún así recibimos esas críticas. Tomando en consideración esta realidad, que actualmente constituye un desafío en el hemisferio para los países que, como el nuestro, prestan servicios financieros y corporativos a nivel internacional, solicitamos que este foro se haga eco de nuestro interés de que se reconozca el derecho soberano de cada país de diseñar un marco legal que logre un adecuado balance entre las expectativas internacionales y los intereses nacionales, que se reconozca la necesidad de establecer periodos transicionales adecuados y que se tome en consideración la proporcionalidad entre el beneficio que origina la adopción de los estándares sugeridos y el costo de aplicación de los mismos para nuestros países. Lo anterior, es en nuestra opinión, una postura responsable que, en el caso panameño, ha requerido meses de reflexión a lo interno del gobierno y del sector privado. Es por ello que desde Panamá queremos aprovechar la oportunidad para exhortar a los países miembros que participan en mecanismos donde se elaboran políticas fiscales e internacionales que aunemos esfuerzos regionales con mecanismos más participativos para que se tome en cuenta, en dichos foros, nuestra opinión, las particularidades de nuestros países y de nuestros centros financieros, de forma que no nos veamos excluidos y afectados por las nuevas tendencias en esta materia que intentan crear una uniformidad ficticia sobre realidades que no lo son, de manera que se logre evitar una disociación entre quienes dictan las políticas y quienes tienen que vivir con las consecuencias de las mismas. Muchas gracias.
Dr. Uritia, thank you very much indeed for that very comprehensive statement. Now, I suggested at the beginning that we would hear two of the speakers and then take any questions that delegations may have before we go on to the second set of speakers. So I now open the floor to any delegations that might like to ask our speakers for any clarification or put any questions to them. The floor is open. If I am to regard the absence of questions of anybody asking for the floor as an indication that we could go on with the following two speakers and then take the questions at the end, then I'm quite happy to do that. Okay? I think that's what we will do. So if I can ask Bruce Zegaris to join us here, and he will make his presentation now. Let me just tell you that Dr. Zegaris is a partner of the Washington DC firm of Berliner, Cochrane and Rowe. His practice in tax controversy work includes representing individuals and entities in offshore voluntary disclosure applications, audits and criminal tax investigations, exchange of information and evidence gathering. He's also represented many governments and international organizations. His work has involved negotiating tax treaties, advice on FATCA, bilateral investment treaties, mutual assistance and criminal matters treaties, and proposing and drafting financial products to attract investment. His practice has involved advising clients in Latin America, especially Brazil and the Caribbean. Dr. Zegaris, you have the floor, sir.
And distinguished delegates, muy buenos dias. So I have a PowerPoint, and I'm going to focus on several points. I'm first going to focus on some of the impacts of the derisking. I'm also then going to look at some of the issues of the international politics of financial regulation. Some of those have been, you know, addressed, but I'm particularly going to talk about the problem of the lack of a level playing field in international financial architecture. And then I'm going to look at some potential solutions. So as we've heard, derisking is so great that it's impacting all kinds of legitimate financial transactions, and it's having a wide range of economic and also security aspects. And part of the problem with the unfair trade in international financial services and the derisking arises from the politics of international financial regulatory system. So I'm going to look at eleven different potential solutions, but let me right now turn to some of the impacts. As Ryan Pinder mentioned, already the CARICOM region has been very much engaged in dealing with some of these impacts. And for instance, the magnitude shows, for instance, with five out of seven banks in Belize have had their correspondent bank relationship terminated by the US. Two domestic commercial banks and four international banks in the Bahamas have been directly impacted by the loss of correspondent bank relationships. Eight domestic financial institutions in Barbados have had accounts terminated by primarily Canadian and US correspondent banks, as well as a few in the Netherlands, the UK and Germany. In Jamaica, correspondent banks in the US, the UK and Canada have been terminated or restrictions have been imposed. The impact in Mexico is that while it must report taking in US 3.4 billion a year, it cannot return that money. Although the dollar clearance is a crucial need for any business, and especially in Mexico, the largest trading partner for the US has been without a correspondent bank for the past two years. Clearing the substantial amounts of cash earned through legitimate sources such as tourism, global trade and local commerce along the US-Mexico border has been a problem. In addition, Central American countries are highly reliant, as we all know, on remittances, which is a transaction which has been rated as a high risk. So the impacts include the remaining banks that haven't terminated their correspondent relationships, as you would imagine, are raising their prices significantly or either providing decreased services. Jurisdictions and entrepreneurs in the region are searching for diversifying away from US banks, again, as Ryan Pinder has mentioned, and even using Chinese banks at significantly higher cost. I mean, I hear they're charging $300 a transaction, no matter how small the transaction. They're also looking to diversify into Bitcoin and electronic currencies. And the proximity of these countries to the US makes them vulnerable to relying on foreign financial institutions whose purpose may be inimical to the US and which see an opportunity to establish themselves close to the US. So just a few days ago, on March 18, the IMF report says Panama must quickly develop contingency plans to counter the effects of derisking. Evolving business models for banks, changes in capital regulations, concerns over compliance with tax rules and international standards on financial sector integrity, and increased due diligence by financial banks, particularly with links to the US, have curtailed some smaller Panamanian banks' access to correspondent banks. Now, these banks have been able to substitute other correspondents, and the macrofinancial impact at present has been negligible, but nevertheless, further loss of correspondent banking services could undermine cross-border payments and trade finance with negative implications to the country. We also see, I won't repeat, the fact that in the Bahamas and the Turks and Caicos, there have been especially problems with remittances in correspondent banks. So while the US has the biggest volume of transactions not meeting international regulatory standards, its jurisdictions and constituents do not suffer the same problems compared to smaller jurisdictions because the US controls international organizations and informal groups, and these international organizations and informal groups are reluctant to challenge US noncompliance, let alone to impose countermeasures on the US. So the problem is that derisking is going to continue, and although nobody has mentioned it today, I mean, a big problem is not only the higher regulatory standards, but also the fact that there's increased prosecution of not only financial institutions, but also with the recent issuance by the Department of Justice of the Yates memo, there's an increased focus on prosecuting bank executives. So let me now turn to the important issue of the politics of international regulatory initiatives. The global multilateralism characterizing the last fifty years of international economic affairs has been replaced by diverse and more modest regional clubs. So for instance, we've seen the rise of the G7, or after the 2008 crisis, instead of engaging the IMF, there was a creation of the G20 to make the new rules. Or the use of the Financial Stability Board. The new groups and forum also endeavor to coordinate diverse sectors of the international economy and to export their priorities to member governments. Many of these groups and forums are more modest in size, formality and even inclusiveness, but they are very active in influencing the multilateral strategies of economic statecraft. So two elements characterize what I call the new multilateral system. One is the increasing turn from global cooperation towards strategic alliances. So for instance, the G20 is an example. Another example is when the US adopted FATCA, the Foreign Account Tax Compliance Act, and when many of the countries protested, the US made an alliance with five countries that they said, "Ah, let's do this intergovernmental agreement." So that's an example of these new strategic alliances. Another example is the use of soft laws. The use by, for instance, of the OECD or the Financial Action Task Force of soft law standards, but then using evaluations and also using countermeasures to impose punishment on those countries which these informal groups like FATF or the OECD says are not compliant. And in terms of tax policy, we know that the big countries have blocked the use of universal membership groups like the United Nations or the IMF to make those policies. Instead, they use the OECD or they even form a sham group, the Global Forum on Tax Transparency and Exchange of Information, to make those policies. So, and this has created then a lack of a level playing field. So for instance, I'm just going to give you a few examples of how the superpower, my country, the United States, doesn't play by the rules but yet does not suffer any of the consequences. So one of the things that from time to time Treasury takes action on is economic citizenship. But the US has its own EB5 program, which only requires an investment of as little as $500,000 and has been the subject of so many frauds that the Securities and Exchange Commission has issued warnings. Many investigative reporters like 60 Minutes have done specials focusing on the EB5 program. The US has all kinds of ring-fencing initiatives where they treat their citizens one way, but they treat foreign investors a more favorable way in order to attract investment. So one of the ones that we all know is investing in foreign bank accounts. So if you're a non-resident alien and you get interest from foreign bank accounts, you pay no interest, I mean, you pay no tax on the interest, and in tal FATCA, there was no reporting. Even with FATCA, the US does not reciprocate. So, and more recently, there's been a lot of focus by the media on what's called regulatory arbitrage. So for instance, in 2006, when the Financial Action Task Force evaluated the US, it found the US was noncompliant in two important areas. One is entity or corporate transparency, and the second area is gatekeeper initiatives. The gatekeeper, of course, are lawyers, accountants, that have their own anti-money laundering obligations. So meanwhile, in 2012, the Financial Action Task Force has raised the standards. So far, one of the last countries that hasn't been evaluated is the United States, not surprisingly. Meanwhile, the G7 and the G20 have continued to raise the standards. Now, one of the things that the US Congress has tried to do for now at least four sessions is to enact corporate transparency laws under, it's called the Incorporation, Transparency and Law Enforcement Assistance Act, but it's never made it very far because states and the private sector have always opposed it. When foreign prosecutors request assistance from the United States on criminal cases, guess what happens? First of all, the statistics show that in the last five years, the Department of Justice doesn't have the resources to respond, but when they finally do respond, they have to say, "Sorry, we can't help you because Delaware or Nevada, they don't keep beneficial ownership information, and so, you know, we can't help you out." The US states have their own The U.S. states have their own financial services. So for instance, the states attract what's called single-member limited liability companies, which are used to make foreign investments, and as a result, they pay no tax in the U.S. The gatekeeper requirements, which I mentioned, FATAF found the U.S. was noncompliant in 2006, it's now 10 years later, and virtually nothing has been done. The American bar has voluntary good practice guidelines, but the states, the state bars, like the District of Columbia or California, they don't incorporate these into their own requirements, and so guess what? Lawyers don't follow these rules, as you would expect. With respect to exchange of information, as Sir Ronald Sanders has mentioned, the U.S. under FATCA has required all of your countries to spend an enormous amount of money on software, on hiring lawyers to do new legislation, new regulations. And in Section 6 of these intergovernmental agreements, the U.S. says, "Ah, we admit that right now we can't quite comply, but we promise to do so in the very near future." It's now been four years, and the U.S. is not even close to reciprocating because, as we know, the politics of the U.S., namely, the Republican-controlled Congress, they don't want to do it. In fact, the Texas and Florida Bankers Association have sued the Treasury to even stop them from complying the little bit with FATCA. And so, and of course, most of your countries have signed up to the common reporting standard, but so far, the U.S. has said, "Sorry, we don't think we have the authority to enter into these requirements, and so we're just gonna, we're gonna go ahead with our unilateral FATCA." And so as a result, what you have is now many foreign trust companies are moving their structures to the U.S. because they see, "Ah, this is an advantage to help foreigners that don't want to comply with the OECD to have their structures in the U.S." And so we see that the gap between the noncompliance of 10 years ago is now widening between the U.S. and the rest of the countries. Nevertheless, states have their tax haven initiatives. So in these tax haven initiatives, of course, they punish companies that are doing business in so-called tax havens. And some of these states use lists that were done in 1998 by the OECD, when the OECD did the harmful tax practices, even though these lists are completely out of date. When governments protest to Treasury and say, "Wait a minute, you've got to do something," Treasury says, "Ah, we have nothing to do with the states." Even though, if you look at the Tax Information Exchange Agreement between the United States and Mexico, the agreement with Canada, or even the fact that the U.S. has joined the OECD Convention on Multilateral Administrative Tax Assistance, it includes the states. So you see that the Treasury is unfortunately talking out of both sides of its mouth. So finally, we get to some potential solutions. Most importantly, the international financial architecture requires improvement. Policies should be made not by these little clubs, they should be made by countries or by organizations that have universal membership, so that all of the countries here, instead of only having a say in the Caribbean FATAF or in the Latin American FATAF, they have a seat at the table, they can be making policy, and they can be implementing the policy. And when FATAF evaluates the U.S., they shouldn't evaluate the U.S., they should be evaluating each of the states, like Delaware and Nevada. I mean, these states have economies that are three to 100 times as large as many of the countries that are here, and they have their own incentives, and they also have their own, you know, tax haven laws, so they should also be treated like a country in terms of whether they comply with anti-money laundering requirements. And until they are evaluated, what's going to happen is that the anti-money laundering rules will continue to lack legitimacy, there will continue to be this lack of a level playing field, and also, of course, there will continue to be unfair trade in financial services. Technical assistance is an area that I think more could be done with. I know the IDB has a technical assistance program, especially to help countries prepare for the FATAF evaluation, which keeps getting, you know, larger and more difficult. Another solution is WTO dispute panel. Panama did very well in bringing an action against Argentina, when Argentina put Panama on the list and discriminated against Panama. So Dispute Settlement 453 was the name of the panel, where, to a large extent, Panama was found to have been discriminated against. And even though the WTO said, "Yes, Argentina can take a prudential exception," but still, I mean, prudential exception to safeguard its financial system, but nevertheless, the way in which Argentina had applied that prudential exception was a violation of the GATS, the General Agreement on Trade in Services. So, I mean, I think, you know, one thing that countries might want to look to do more is taking action in the WTO. Unilateral solutions are a potential. On March 7, the U.S. Controller of the Currency announced that it may create new guidance to deal with de-risking, but, you know, remains to be seen what, if anything, will be done. We've heard Ryan Pinder mention the World Bank is looking at it, but, you know, so far hasn't done anything. So some additional things that can be done, and which really the CARICOM heads of government are already doing, are this awareness program, the appointment of a high-level advocacy group, information campaign, enhancing information exchange and engaging in constructive dialogue, a regional arrangement for supervisory and regulatory authorities. I mean, I think that idea merits further examination. And, I mean, eventually, what is happening and is going to continue to happen is diversification away from the metropole, which, you know, I don't think is going to be what a lot of people want, but it seems to be, you know, it seems to be inevitable. So with that, I want to close my formal remarks. Thank you for your attention. I also have a few slides of bibliographical material, recent articles, and with that, I turn the program back to the chairman.
Dr. Zagaris, thank you very much indeed for that presentation, which has been extremely revealing, I'm sure, to many of our member states. I'd now like to offer the floor to Mr. Daniel Mitchell. Dan is a senior fellow with the K2 Institute. He specializes in fiscal policy, particularly tax reform, international tax competition, and the economic burden of government spending. He also serves on the editorial board of the Cayman Financial Review. Prior to joining the K2 Institute, Dan was a senior fellow with the Heritage Foundation and an economist for Senator Bob Packwood and the Senate Finance Committee. His work has been published in numerous outlets, including The Wall Street Journal, The New York Times, Villanova Law, Public Choice, Emory Law, Forbes USA, Today, Offshore Investment, and Investors Business Daily. He's also published in Playboy, I'm not sure why. Maybe he'll tell us later. He's appeared on all the major TV networks in the United States and has given speeches in almost 40 states and more than 30 countries. He earned a PhD in economics from George Mason University. Dan, it's a pleasure to offer you the floor.
Chairman and honored participants, I do have a, oh, there's my PowerPoint presentation. To answer your question, I wrote an article for the German Playboy, but since I don't read German very well, all I can do is look at the pictures, I'm afraid. But what I want to do as an economist is give a slightly different perspective than the lawyers who have participated here. I want to talk about some of the underlying cost-benefit and fiscal policy perspectives on this issue. And I want to start by saying that the real problem is the onshore world. And the real problem is the onshore world because the onshore world, those are the countries that are facing fiscal crisis. Think of the economic chaos and fiscal challenges that you now see in Greece. Those things are going to happen, and a lot of other countries in the Western world, mostly because of poorly designed entitlement programs and changing demographics. And those changing demographics are built into the system, and those changing demographics are dooming a lot of these countries to have very serious fiscal problems over the next 5, 10, 15 years, and that is why we see, to a great degree, this assault on low-tax jurisdictions around the world. This just shows the U.S. population pyramid. Historically, countries have always had these pyramids, but you'll see in the U.S., as we're getting toward the current era, it's becoming more of a cylinder, and over time, as you go all the way out to the 2080s, we're becoming an upside-down pyramid. Now, why does this matter? It matters because if you have a reasonably sized welfare state with a population pyramid, it can work. But when you move into a population cylinder or even to an upside-down pyramid, these welfare states collapse. And that's already happening in some European economies, and it's going to happen in the U.S. and other European economies without reform. But of course, what's the problem? Politicians don't want to do reform. They'd much rather think that there's some mythical pot of gold at the end of the offshore rainbow, and so you have the United States and various European welfare states ganging up to impose these initiatives from the OECD, from the European Commission, all designed for one thing, to destroy financial privacy, to undermine fiscal sovereignty, so high-tax nations can prop up their systems for a little bit longer. And the question is, should we allow this damage to the global economy to occur simply because countries like the U.S. and France won't engage in the reforms that are necessary? I have to say, as an economist, this is completely and grossly inconsistent with good public finance. All the public finance literature very clearly shows certain core principles of what a good tax system looks like, and among those principles are low rates, no double taxation, no loopholes, and territoriality. Well, the entire initiatives from the OECD and other international bureaucracies are based on violating two of those principles, because they're based on extraterritorial double taxation of income that is saved and invested. In other words, if nations like the U.S. and France and Germany and Japan didn't have bad tax policy, this entire issue would disappear. And I think that's critically important to think about, because, you know, again, as I said, this is an onshore problem, not an offshore problem. Now, let's talk about the double standards, and I'll go through this quickly because I think we've already had some very, very deep and illuminating thoughts from Bruce on this issue. But I'll start with something that Bruce didn't mention. All Western nations became rich when government was very, very small, and they didn't even have income tax systems. So the idea that the United States is now going to try to penalize and persecute jurisdictions that simply want to follow the same economic development model that made the United States and other Western nations rich, I find that extremely hypocritical. But it's well beyond that. You know, it's not just that we're a tax haven in the United States, as Bruce mentioned, we're unquestionably the world's largest tax haven, and Bruce gave you the details on that. But let me show you something here. This is from the Tax Justice Network, which is never a group I like to cite, since they're very pro-OED and very much in favor of destroying fiscal sovereignty around the world, but they ranked the United States, as of a couple of years ago, as the sixth biggest tax haven in the world, just by virtue of policies. Now, Obama, of course, likes to say that the Cayman Islands is a bad jurisdiction, and he attacked the Cayman Islands for having 12,000 companies registered at one building, and he said it was either the biggest building in the world or the biggest tax scam in the world. Well, what he should have done is looked at Delaware, because there's a building in Delaware that's smaller than Uglund House. This building in Delaware doesn't have 12,000 companies registered in it, and by the way, Obama was wrong, there are 18,000 companies registered at Uglund House in the Cayman Islands. But this building in Delaware, which is smaller than Uglund House, has 221,000 companies registered in it. I actually have a company registered in this building. Now, obviously, I've never been to this building, but of course, the reality is, is that where a company is registered for legal purposes is different from where its headquarters is, where its operations are. And unfortunately, the president should have asked his vice president, Joe Biden, who's from Delaware, and he perhaps could have explained this simple fact of business to the president. Here's a chart showing foreign indirect investment into the U.S. economy. In other words, does the United States benefit from being a tax haven? It sure does. We have trillions of dollars, literally trillions of dollars, of indirect investment in U.S. stocks and bonds, in part, I mean, I'm sure there are many, many reasons why money is invested in the U.S. economy, but there's no question that our very attractive tax and privacy laws make the U.S. the biggest tax haven in the world. So we have these massive double standards. It even applies in the issue of money laundering. Again, you know, I don't really need to add to the very learned discourse that Bruce already has shared with us, but I want to share this one quote from the professor Avinash Prasad, who's an expert on these issues. "Money launderers seek to hide their illicit earnings in large financial places like London, New York." There's probably more money laundered in New York in a day than there is in a stereotypical tax haven in an entire year, because criminals and the FBI in their research have said criminals like to launder their money close to where they obtain it. Well, the overwhelming share of criminal money in the world is drug profits earned in the U.S. You know, the drug dealers aren't creating red flags for themselves by trying to wire money offshore, they're laundering it in U.S. banks. And by the way, another economist point I can't resist making. All the cost-benefit analysis has shown that these anti-money laundering laws and rules and regulations impose far more costs than the benefits that are achieved in terms of theoretically reducing the underlying predicate offenses that money laundering laws were imposed to try to stop in the first place. So no one ever bothers to sort of stop and say, "Well, wait a second, are we actually getting good bang for the buck? Are we actually achieving something measurable and valuable?" And yet, all the assessments that have been done by academics who have studied money laundering laws say, "No, it's not having any effect on underlying predicate offenses," or the effect is so trivial that doesn't justify the multi-billion-dollar cost that's being imposed on the world economy. And of course, we've already heard from Ryan Pinder, you know, certain jurisdictions are heavily adversely and negatively affected because of all these laws that don't have any underlying justification on a cost-benefit basis. We also have the issue of moving goalposts here. The high-tax jurisdictions say one thing one year, and the next year, once they get you to surrender, they say, "Oh, by the way, we have a new set of demands." The whole OECD project originally started with the idea of information exchange upon request on an individual basis with due process legal protections, and now what has it morphed to? It's morphed to automatic information sharing on a promiscuous basis, even with jurisdictions that have corrupt, venal, or incompetent governments. The original goal, of course, was bilateral tax treaties, with both parties gaining some benefits, not just this one-way street where the U.S. says, "Give us something, and we give you nothing in return." Well, now we have FATCA, CRS, the OECD Convention, and all these initiatives are based on, you give information to the U.S., the U.S. gives you nothing back. But again, a small initiative has morphed into something much, much bigger. Same thing with the money laundering laws that I already talked about. Originally, Originally, it was a relatively modest thing: know your customer, maintain records, cooperate with law enforcement when there's legitimate reason for government to be snooping into someone's finances. But now we have these very, very ineffective rules that impose very, very heavy costs. And it's not just a de-risking. Millions of people in the United States, and God knows how many tens of millions of people around the world, go unbanked because all the money laundering laws and rules and regulations, in effect, make them too expensive for the banks to deal with. So poor people are suffering, poor people are being hurt, all for a regime that doesn't actually provide benefits, according to the academics who have studied it. So what's the bottom line to all this? Well, unfortunately, I don't have any really good suggestions, because the United States is the 800-pound gorilla in the world economy. And when the United States decides to try to impose bad policy around the world, it's very difficult to resist. But I will say one thing: you have to somehow try to figure out how to resist. Because you know what? If you feed your leg to an alligator that doesn't turn him into a vegetarian, all that happens is that he'll want another leg or an arm the next day. And again, this is these moving goalposts. All you do is you encourage more demands from the high-tax countries, more demands from the G7-controlled international bureaucracies. And where does this end? It ends with the entire world looking like Greece, I'm afraid, at the end of the day. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the chairman. Thank you very much for this opportunity to share some thoughts.
Dr. Mitchell, thank you very, very much indeed for that extremely, again, insightful presentation and revealing it many ways, I'm sure, to many of the delegations here and to people who may be watching this on the OES website, which is being streamed live. Now, having heard the presentations from the presenters, I'd like now to open the floor to delegations for any questions or clarifications that you might like to put to the panel. The floor is open, and I give the floor to Panama.
Buenas tardes, señor presidente del Consejo Permanente, embajador Ronald Sanders, señor secretario general adjunto Néstor Méndez, distinguidos embajadores, ponentes, miembros de la secretaría, delegados todos y todas. Mi delegación desea en primer lugar agradecerle, señor presidente, por convocar esta sesión especial del Consejo Permanente, cuyo propósito es abordar el tema sobre los efectos en el hemisferio de las prácticas injustas de la industria de servicios financieros. Reconocemos que este tema es de suma importancia para nuestra región. Mi delegación desea sumarse a las muestras de felicitaciones ya señaladas por otras delegaciones y agradecerle en este sentido a la doctora Farah Diva Urutia, directora general de asuntos jurídicos y tratados del Ministerio de Relaciones Exteriores de la República de Panamá por la presentación realizada. Agradecemos de igual manera al señor Ryan Pinder, miembro del Parlamento de Bahamas, al señor Bruce Zagaris, socio del despacho Berliner Corcan and Road LLP in Washington, DC, y al señor Daniel Mitchell, investigador principal de Cato Institute. Me gustaría mencionarles, señores ponentes, que sus presentaciones han sido sumamente enriquecedoras para nuestra organización. Es importante que nuestros estados sigan prestando atención y protejan el crecimiento económico y el desarrollo social, brindándole lo mejor a nuestros ciudadanos, en donde la transparencia y la rendición de cuentas juegan un papel muy importante. Es primordial salvaguardar el sistema financiero de prácticas injustas. Me gustaría resaltarles que nuestro país, en ese sentido, se ha fortalecido y ha presentado progreso en la lucha contra el lavado de dinero y el financiamiento del terrorismo. Consideramos este hecho como un paso muy positivo e importante para nuestro país. Muchas gracias, señor presidente.
Thank you very much, distinguished ambassador of Panama. Now I give the floor to St. Kitts and Nevis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank the very distinguished chairman of the OES Caricom Council, as well as the chairman of the Permanent Council from my neighboring state of Antigua and Bebuda, for their leadership in assembling this very distinguished panel for addressing this most important matter. The panel has articulated very clearly and comprehensively the difficulties and the harmful effects that result from them. It is my view that the inclination to place blame by some on the correspondent banks and their financial regulators is necessary, but by no means sufficient. The root cause of the difficulty is embedded in the high-tax policies that motivate an exodus of financial capital to low-tax jurisdictions. This is the same tax competition issue that motivates companies to seek refuge in low-tax jurisdictions such as Texas and Delaware. As noted by the panelists, these high-tax policy actions are having devastating effects across the entire region. The flow of personal remittances is critically important to the vast majority of our economies. The potential harmful effects are most severe for Mexico, which leads the region in the flow of personal remittances, which is several multiples of the combined flow of remittances to many of our large member states. Notwithstanding, the St. Kitts-Nevis group is very much supportive of the actions being presented here with respect to making efforts to defuse the effects of these very, very high-tax policy initiatives. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, St. Kitts and Nevis. And now I give the floor to the United States of America.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My delegation wishes to thank those who have made their presentations this morning. The United States recognizes the seriousness of this issue and the potential ramifications for some member states. We also recognize our duty to fight terrorism and transnational organized crime by cutting off their sources of funding. This is also a serious issue. There are various factors behind the loss of correspondent relationships, including global economic conditions, prudential requirements instituted after the global financial crisis, and poor implementation of global standards for anti-money laundering and countering the financing of terrorism. Recognizing the limits of our ability to influence private sector decisions, we are committed to working with countries, including through technical assistance and by facilitating dialogue between governments and banks. To cite just a few examples of our ongoing constructive dialogue, the US Department of Treasury co-hosted a United States-Central America public-private dialogue in December 2015 in Panama City, Panama, where banks and regulatory authorities from several countries discussed a wide array of issues related to correspondent banking. Other participants included Central American countries, Colombia, and Mexico. US Treasury officials participated in a de-risking roundtable event held by the Financial Stability Board, World Bank, and International Monetary Fund in December 2015 in Barbados, where representatives from Caribbean governments, Peru, Mexico, and Colombia also attended and presented on the issues their governments face in maintaining correspondent banking relationships. Less than seven days ago, the United States and Caribbean representatives, and Mr. Chair, many of us seated here were in attendance then, and I apologize if they've heard some of this before, but US and Caribbean representatives sat down together with the Department of State and Treasury to continue this important dialogue. And in less than seven days from now, the United States Treasury will organize an event on correspondent banking in the Caribbean to be held in Kingston, Jamaica on April 5th and 6th. We thank the government of Jamaica for helping to move this ongoing and necessary dialogue forward. We hope this event will provide another opportunity for US and Caribbean government and bank officials to discuss trends in correspondent banking, illicit finance risks in the region, and expectations regarding correspondent banking relationships and implementation of international anti-money laundering and countering financing of terrorism standards. The United States, at this point, is not ready to join consensus on the current draft declaration, but we are interested in moving forward together with Caribbean member states on this issue. We also recognize many others do not have instructions today, not just from their foreign ministries, but also their treasury ministries. And we recognize they would need new instructions even if we were ready to agree on a new text today. We therefore agree, or propose, to defer consideration and possible adoption of a draft declaration until all member states are better able to quickly support a revised declaration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, United States. I now give the floor to St. Vincent and the Grenadines.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. His Excellency Néstor Méndez, Assistant Secretary General, distinguished excellencies, alternate representatives, and permanent observers, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. Mr. Chairman, on behalf of my delegation, let me commence by acknowledging, and for the record, please my delegation's support for the statement made earlier this morning by the distinguished ambassador of Belize on behalf of the Caricom Caucus of Ambassadors. Nevertheless, despite the excellent intervention by the Caricom Chair, St. Vincent and the Grenadines would like to say a few words, and hopefully we will not repeat what was expressed by the presenters and delegations earlier. Mr. Chairman, please permit me to also thank our guests for presenting this morning on this pressing topic: finance and banking services, challenges to development in the Americas. Kudos is in order for the Honorable Ryan Pinder, Dr. Farah Diva Urutia, Mr. Bruce Zagaris, and last but not least, Mr. Daniel Mitchell. My delegation deeply appreciates each and every one of you for gracing us with your presence and for doing such a wonderful job during your respective presentations. Mr. Chairman, the issue of de-risking and correspondent banking relationships does not only impact a few countries, but the global financial system as a whole is at risk. As a matter of fact, if we are not careful, the end result could be a disaster. In the meanwhile, the Caribbean region is disproportionately affected. Mr. Chairman, there have been developments within the financial services industry, specifically within the international financial services sector in comparison, sorry, to the domestic sector. However, these developments have been cross-cutting, and upon undertaking a thorough analysis, we will see how measures to address issues within the international financial services sector eventually impacts the domestic banking sector, leading to de-risking and loss in correspondent banking relationships. And this was presented by the speakers, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, it is fair to admit that in some instances, many developments within the financial services industry, beginning in the 1990s, can be considered legitimate with good intentions, such as countering money laundering. Unfortunately, and however, this has not been the reality because of unintended consequences which occurred and continue to this day. Hence, these unintended consequences cannot be ignored, and there is a need for common sense to prevail, because we must admit that in life, everything cannot be seen in black and white. There are gray areas, and pragmatism must prevail. Mr. Chairman, any unfairness, hypocrisy, misperceptions, and misrepresentations must stop or be addressed. For instance, going back to the 1990s and after the harbor September 11th, 2001 terrorist attacks, developments or measures being undertaken within the financial services industry arising from the mandates of the G20, FATF, and OECD in order to ensure success with anti-money laundering and to counter the financing of terrorism was not only seen as legitimately tackling problems, but creating new problems, because the reach of the good intentions surpassed the boundaries. Mr. Chairman, not only that some countries saw these measures as extraterritorial, but rather viewed them with some suspicion, since some of these affected countries were beginning the process of diversifying their economies. During that difficult period, affected countries traditionally reliant on dominant unexporting in monochrome or being a dominant goods-based economy were shifting towards a services-export-oriented economy and were beginning to reap tremendous benefits, only to be blacklisted by the FATF and the OECD. Mr. Chairman, the situation became worse during the 2008 global financial and economic crisis, whereby a certain aspect of the financial services sector was unfairly targeted, and some countries were even seen as scapegoats. Nonetheless, reforms were made, and specifically in my country, of St. Vincent and the Grenadines, laws were amended and introduced. As a matter of fact, since the 1990s to this current period, the financial services sector of St. Vincent and the Grenadines has been revamped to address the shortcomings within the international sector, and we are in compliance with FATF and OECD recommendations. Also, reforms were undertaken to strengthen the domestic banking sector and the non-bank financial services sector. Furthermore, my country has signed and is enforcing various tax information exchange agreements with many countries. We even have done the same regarding the Foreign Account Tax Compliance Act, FATCA, and our anti-money laundering and counter-financing terrorism measures are strong. We even have one of the best financial intelligence units, FIUs, in the region, and my delegation is aware that similar reforms have been undertaken by other countries within the region. Mr. Chairman, for these reasons, my delegation is surprised that the Caribbean region is considered to be risky, which has led to the issue of de-risking and the subsequent loss of correspondent banking relationships. Mr. Chairman, once more, let me establish the linkage between developments within the international financial services sector, the domestic banking sector, and the loss in correspondent banking relationships. Mr. Chairman, countries have implemented reforms in compliance with mandates or recommendations from the G20, FATF, and OECD. These bodies are the recognized standard bearers for international cooperation, best practices, and peer review. Therefore, it is frustrating when countries are in compliance, but the goalpost seems to shift, whereby some countries or institutions, despite being members of these bodies and other similar regional groupings or institutions, unilaterally institute measures. To make matters worse, some states or local jurisdictions or entities within these same nations have done unilateral measures as well. As a consequence, these actions have led to the unjust naming and shaming of countries and so-called new blacklists and the unfair listing of countries as tax havens in pieces of legislation. Based upon these factors, including new regulations to comply with, banks doing business with the region will evaluate the situation and make a decision. Unfortunately, the reality presented incentivizes banks to de-risk, hence, an eventual loss in correspondent banking relationships. And even in some cases, we have unfairly had the closure of embassy bank accounts. Mr. Chairman, my delegation wishes to underscore the point that the cost of compliance is already high in the region, and any further pressure can destroy our fragile economies. For this reason, my delegation reaffirms our view for pragmatism to prevail, because there are unintended and unfair consequences as a result of practices by regulators, institutions, and countries as it relates to the financial services industry. Mr. Chairman, my delegation understands that banks need to be profitable, and governments cannot force banks to accept customers or who they must have correspondent banking relationships with. Also, my delegation is cognizant and respect that governments do need revenue and must be able to collect such. It is even the sovereign rights of governments to diversify their economies accordingly and to offer fiscal incentives or any other legal measures to attract business. We note that governments must fight against money laundering and terrorism. My delegation notes that consumers and businesses need access to credit, and the average law-abiding citizen, sorry, needs to be encouraged to open and maintain bank accounts without feeling as if the institution or government is viewing them as money launderers. As well, Mr. Chairman, diplomatic missions need access to banking services within a host country, and in small, open economies such as St. Vincent and the Grenadines and other Caribbean countries, correspondent banking relationships play a critical role in the economy. Mr. Chairman, all of these factors must be taken into consideration in order to address this matter, since there is a clear linkage between developments within the international financial services sector, the domestic banking sector, and the loss of correspondent banking relationships. The necessary dialogue with all stakeholders and the diplomatic postures must take place and continue where such talks have already started. Whether this is done at the bilateral level or at the multilateral level, discussed privately or publicly among countries or stakeholders, discussed with traditional allies or with new allies, and between friends and foes... new allies, and between friends and foes. And actually, Mr. Chairman, my delegation favors all options. What is important, though, Mr. Chairman, is the need for solidarity and urgent action, because this situation is a threat to the global financial system. Even if some countries currently are not impacted, the potential exists for this to change in the not-too-distant future. And, Mr. Chairman, there's a popular saying, "When your neighbor's house is on fire, what's your own?" Mr. Chairman, at the moment, the Caribbean region is disproportionately impacted. Hence, with no solution, our economies will go under. Mr. Chairman, my delegation's remarks here today should not be taken as any attack against any country or countries. We simply wish to point out the difficulties currently being encountered and the threats posed to our economic survival. We have implemented reforms where necessary or appropriate, and partnered with the international community and institutions, and will continue to do so in a fair manner and transparent manner. We will not be silent if measures with good intentions result in unintended consequences, which jeopardizes the economic health of my nation, and in this case, simple, basic corresponding banking relationships. Currently, the Eastern Caribbean Central Bank is in discussion with regional and international stakeholders on the way forward, including the adoption of the 2014 SWIFT Know Your Customer Registry Initiative. Mr. Chairman, I wish to conclude, and would like to thank you for allowing my delegation the opportunity to speak here today on this very important topic. I thank you, sir.
Thank you, St. Vincent and the Grenadines. And now I offer the floor to the delegation of the Bahamas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wish to begin by underscoring that my delegation stands in solidarity with the statement delivered on behalf of Caricom. I also wish to extend thanks to you, Chair, for convening this important meeting today to facilitate engagement here in this hemispheric forum on issues that present real challenges to the integral development of many member states. I also extend thanks to the invited experts, who have contributed much in the way of food for thought on such challenges. Permit me to exercise privilege on this occasion and pay a special welcome to my fellow countryman, Mr. Ryan Pinder, Member of Parliament and former Minister of Financial Services, as well as Sir Michael Barnett, former Attorney General and Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. Mr. Chairman, for my country, the primary banking and financial services challenges we face relate to assertions which undermine the legitimacy of my country's financial services sector and policies that limit many developing countries like mine from access to development financing. We hope that the conversation today will dispel myths regarding indicators of economic development and move the hemisphere closer towards a uniform, level playing field we expect in the field of financial services. Mr. Chairman, the Bahamas is a well-established, well-regulated, and fully compliant financial jurisdiction, and yet, we alongside many colleague member states here, continue to face a seeming cascade of arbitrary and spurious designations as a tax haven. The recent tax haven labeling initiatives across the United States seem to have caused reputational damages to our jurisdictions, as opposed to reaching its intended objective of enhancing state tax revenues. Mr. Chairman, the Bahamas has an exemplary history of functional bilateral cooperation through tax information exchange. Since 2003, we have met and indeed exceeded international standards for tax information exchange as set by the OECD through the adoption of some 30 bilateral tax information exchange agreements. We have further already committed to comply with the OECD and G20 Automatic Tax Information Exchange Standard that will take effect from 2018 through bilateral mechanisms with interested and appropriate partners that meet standards on confidentiality, data safeguards, and proper use of information. Despite these efforts, the ongoing designation of the Bahamas as a tax haven, particularly across several U.S. states, seems to be a peculiar instance of dissonance between U.S. federal and state levels of government, which is particularly troubling in light of the unprecedented levels of government, which is particularly troubling in light of the unprecedented work that we have done and continue to do to be fully compliant with United States and OECD tax authorities' requirements. We hope that today's conversation will reinforce the need for an inclusive, participatory, and broad-based dialogue on international cooperation in tax matters in the hemisphere, and the need to move towards the uniform and level playing field in the Americas that we all desire. Mr. Chairman, my delegation also hopes that this organization will provide a forum for further consideration of matters related to the need for evolution in the lending criteria used by international financial institutions. The criteria used generally by international financial institutions to determine access to capital and concessions are fundamentally and perhaps fatally flawed. Conceptually, denying access to concessional resources is not supposed to be an automatic consequence of reaching a particular income level. Rather, it is supposed to be a formal determination based on an assessment of whether the country has reached a level of development, including having institutional capacity and capital market access that enable the country to sustain its own development process without recourse to IFI funding. In practice, however, these metrics are harder to measure, and the dependence on GNI per capita leads to instances of misinterpretation of a country's economic circumstances and premature graduation. This occurs because GNI per capita is a crude tool which does not account for income distribution or the special vulnerabilities of small island development states, of which most Caricom countries would be included. Mr. Chairman, it is counterintuitive for countries to pledge in one forum to seek to improve competitiveness, expand development horizons, and eradicate poverty, and then with the proverbial invisible hand impose conditions that place those goals in jeopardy. The impact of the contraction of corresponding banking relations, the reputational damage from arbitrary assertions which undermine the legitimacy of a country's financial services sector, and policies that limit developing countries like mine from access to development financing retard our development goals. Mr. Chairman, the OAS has a role to play in advancing initiatives that will enhance the opportunities for development. We look forward to Sadies' greater involvement in matters such as those raised in this morning's deliberations. Again, we thank you, Mr. Chairman, for convening today's meeting. We offer our endorsement of the declaration before us, and we reaffirm that we see this as the first of many discussions on real challenges to our collective integral development, which can move us and indeed the hemisphere closer towards the uniform and level playing field we all expect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, the distinguished Ambassador of the Bahamas, for that important statement. Now I give the floor to Jamaica.
Mr. Chairman, Assistant Secretary General, distinguished presenters, colleague ambassadors, ladies and gentlemen. Jamaica welcomes this special meeting of the Permanent Council to discuss the recent trends in the global financial system, to respond to anti-money laundering and counter-financing of terrorism regulations of the Financial Action Task Force, which is having what we believe are unintended consequences on our countries in the Caribbean. My delegation thanks the speakers for their comprehensive presentations. I will confine my remarks this morning to the position of my country, Jamaica. The meeting on this issue today, under the rubric of Finance and Banking Services: Challenges to Development in the Americas, is part of a broader effort on the part of Caricom countries to pursue discussions at various levels, both in the region and internationally, to sensitize and to try to identify the best means of addressing and mitigating the impact of curtailed access to international banking and financial services at the markets caused by AML/CFT regulations. Mr. Chairman, recent FATF recommendations prescribe specific countermeasures that financial institutions in every jurisdiction must implement in order to combat AML/CFT issues. These recommendations have been endorsed by more than 180 countries and are universally recognized as the international standard for AML/CFT. They also formed the basis for national legislators to amend their money laundering/terrorism financing legal and regulatory framework in order to protect the international financial system from misuse and abuse. Of specific concern is the matter of de-risking and the loss of corresponding banking relationships by local banks in our countries on account of efforts by international banks to avoid potential penalties associated with banking practices deemed to be risky. De-risking has resulted in a withdrawal of corresponding banking relationships with Caribbean financial institutions, including several financial institutions in Jamaica. For example, in 2012, one Canadian and a U.S.-correspondent bank each gave Jamaican banks notice that with immediate effect transactions for the benefit of money service businesses are not permitted through their correspondent accounts. Between 2014 and 2015, de-risking trends continued to rise as correspondent banks have voiced concerns about cash activity associated with money service businesses. In citing other examples, one U.S.-correspondent bank has issued a notice that it will stop accepting cash emanating from Cambio operations. Recently, a UK correspondent bank terminated its banking services to one of our most important financial institutions due to what was stated as efficiency changes in their business strategy. In an effort to maintain correspondent accounts, local Jamaican banks have been restricting their acceptance of cash from some Cambios. There are still significant risks for potential disruptions to local financial markets. The loss of corresponding banking relationships stands to severely threaten the operations of the regional private sector and to restrict the flow of remittances which provide liquidity, consumer-led growth, and stability in many Caribbean economies, and is a mainstay of our economies and foreign direct investments. Corresponding banking therefore is necessary for the facilitation of global financial exchange. As we consider the issue, we must also recognize the need to examine the impact as it relates to trade in financial services. The decline of corresponding banking reduces the scope for growth and development of our local financial services sector, thereby having the unintended consequences of limiting entry into or discontinuing linkages required for trade in financial services by local financial service providers, which do not have their own global network. It is against this background, Mr. Chairman, that the issue was also raised by Caricom in the context of a WTO Committee on Trade in Financial Services on March 18, 2016, in Geneva. Mr. Chairman, efforts to curb money laundering and terrorism financing is the business of a global community, as all of us are affected by the devastating consequences of acts of terrorism and criminal activities all over the world. Jamaica is fully committed to an effective AML/CFT framework that serves the interests of all. We are signatories to several international, regional, and bilateral treaties designed to protect the regional and global financial system from actions that threaten its integrity. Legislation aimed at bringing the financial services sector into compliance with international standards have been enacted. AML laws have been in place in Jamaica since the mid-1990s, and the legislative framework continues to be strengthened with the passage of the Terrorism Prevention Act in 2010. Indeed, further updates having been effected to both anti-money laundering and terrorism prevention regulations in 2013, all of which are aimed at minimizing the country's and its banking sector's exposure to financial crimes. Jamaica also signed an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with the United States Department of Treasury pursuant to the United States Foreign Account Tax Compliance Act, FATCA, Model 1A reciprocal in May 2014, bringing the country into compliance with the reporting and information exchange provisions of the Act. Jamaica has taken a constructive approach to addressing the issue with her most important trading partner, the United States, as well as the UK, where most of the affected international banks are situated. We are pleased at the spirit of cooperation that has been the response of the United States arising from bilateral meetings, and we look forward to the subregional meeting to be held in Jamaica on 5 April 2016 to look more closely at this issue. Finally, Mr. Chairman, as mentioned earlier, the meeting today is intended to use this important forum of the OAS Permanent Council to sensitize our partners in this hemisphere on the issue of de-risking with a view to an inclusive, participatory, and broad-based dialogue on solutions to these finance and banking matters. We wish to thank the delegation of our colleague Caricom member state, Antigo and Barbuda, the cosponsorship of the Bahamas, Barbados, and St. Lucia for tabling the draft declaration for our consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jamaica. I now give the floor to Barbados.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Assistant Secretary General, Chairman of the Permanent Council, Permanent Representatives, Alternate Representatives. The Barbados delegation would like to thank the presenters for their very informative interventions on this important topic: Finance and Banking Services: Challenges to the Development of the Americas. We also fully endorse the comments made by Ambassador Andrews of Belize on behalf of the Caricom Caucus. Mr. Chairman, the government of Barbados has over the years dedicated hard-earned resources to diversify its economy through the development of its international financial services sector. The sector has accounted for significant revenue to the government, which has been utilized to forge ahead with the development of the country in the key areas of health, education, and infrastructure building. It has not been an easy process for Barbados, as a small island developing country, to seek to expand this key sector, and the Barbados government has repeatedly had to robustly deflect attacks on its development and what perhaps may have been considered an inordinate success from larger and more powerful countries. The Prime Minister of Barbados, the Right Honourable Ferndale Stewart, made this point very forcefully to the President of the United States, Barack Obama, when Caricom heads of government met with him last year in Montego Bay, Jamaica on April 9. Prime Minister Stewart said, and I quote, "As offshore jurisdictions, our international finan- financial services sectors have been forced to defend themselves insistently, consistently, and persistently against the labeling of our domiciles as tax havens,” with all the pejorative connotations attached to that expression, “this in addition to change after change in the rules that apply to our jurisdictions.” End of quote. Barbados is widely recognized as a small, well-regulated international financial center which adheres to the highest international standards set by the OECD, the Global Forum, under guidance from the G20. Over the past 30 years, we have continually expressed our commitment to the tenets of international tax cooperation through transparency and effective exchange of information, especially with all of our treaty partners. We have signed on to FATCA as well. Barbados is therefore a tax treaty-based jurisdiction which has transparent tax and regulatory systems. Nevertheless, the erroneous allegations of being a tax haven cast grave aspersions on our hard-earned reputation, are detrimental to our economy and development, since it puts at risk our ability to attract investment and business opportunities. The issue of correspondent banking is also grave concern to the government of Barbados as it is a direct threat to the continued buoyancy of the international business sector in the country. Correspondent banking is well-recognized as providing a critical contribution to the global payment and financial system, with cross-broader transactions being facilitated to improve financial and economic stability throughout the Caribbean and the wider world. In many Caribbean jurisdictions, there has been a recent trend of de-risking adopted by global banks, which had led them to either terminate or threaten to terminate their corresponding banking relationships with local banks. Overall, the de-risking strategy has impacted very specific classes of business clientele and jurisdictions throughout the Caribbean. One Canadian bank has closed an entire line of business in Barbados and the Caribbean and Latin America. So far, eight domestic financial institutions have had their accounts terminated by primarily Canadian and US correspondent banks and by other banks in the Netherlands, UK, and Germany as well. Most of the terminations are completely irreplaceable. The inability of international business companies in Barbados and throughout the Caribbean to open foreign-denominated accounts and transact business along with account terminations is the greatest threat to the sector's long-term viability at this time. With these developing trends, there is great difficulty in the ease of doing business within the sector. The Barbados government is therefore of the firm view that the international community, including international institutions, should step up their support to the efforts of Caribbean countries to address these evolving regulatory standards that are contributing to the termination of correspondent banking services in our small economies. The Barbados delegation therefore fully supports the declaration being considered for adoption today, which asserts that these banking regulations pose a severe threat to the economic growth, social development, and political stability of small economies, and also that urgent action should be undertaken to ensure that they do not result in the financial exclusion and economic decline of our small economies. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Barbados, for that very informative and comprehensive statement. Now I'd like to offer the floor to the distinguished Ambassador of Guyana.
Mr. Chairman, His Excellency, the Permanent Representative of Belize, has already made a presentation on this subject on behalf of the Caribbean community, and I wish to thank him for his comprehensive intervention. My delegation thanks you too, Mr. Chairman, for convening a discussion on this matter of such enormous importance. We see this as an opportunity to encourage deeper reflection on whether the global responses in the areas of anti-money laundering and countering the financing of terrorism can better take into account the impact on trade and economic development. We have received unequivocal details from the distinguished panel of speakers about the dire consequences being experienced by countries in the Caribbean and elsewhere as a result of the de-risking strategies employed by global banks. Riveting presentations by Minister Pinder, Mr. Zagaris, and Dr. Mitchell have provided abundant details of the economic harm that has been inflicted on the Caribbean, as well as poignant references to the double standards which are prevalent on this issue. As we have heard, heads of government of CARICOM have deplored the decline in correspondent banking relationships, pointing out that growth, economic progress, destabilization of our financial sectors, as well as our national security, are all being severely impacted. All of this is a consequence of a heightened regulatory posture by regulatory authorities. Time after time, we have witnessed where domestic legislation being enacted in the developed world contain unintended consequences that result in significant economic harm to the Caribbean. A case in point is the bananas issue, where whole industries in the Caribbean were wiped out, resulting in profound economic dislocation in many of our member states. In the current instance, CARICOM members have complied with all global regulatory standards and have been scrutinized in every detail by the relevant multilateral institutions. That is why the actions of the correspondent banks have been characterized as an economic assault, which are tantamount to an economic blockade. If policies being made are going to affect us all, we must all be equally involved in designing them and in dealing with their effects. Mr. Chairman, the effective participation of the Caribbean in global trade and in financial services is critical in our effort to address the challenges of inclusive and sustainable development. This is one of the pillars of the OAS, and it is a matter on which this organization has a responsibility to take a position. For this reason, my delegation would be prepared to give its support to the Declaration on Finance and Banking Services Challenges to Development in the Americas. I thank you.
Thank you very much, the distinguished Ambassador of Guyana. And now I give the floor to Canada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Canada appreciates this opportunity to discuss de-risking and related financial issues in the hemisphere. Given the complexity of the issue at play, we do have concerns about the lack of time allowed for member states to consult our capitals, which unfortunately can compromise our ability to engage meaningfully and limit the effectiveness and quality of our contribution today. The Financial Stability Board is the lead international organization coordinating work to examine the extent and the causes of banks' withdrawal from correspondent banking, as well as the implications for affected jurisdictions, including risks on financial Canada believes that the FSB is the appropriate forum to examine the issue of de-risking in the correspondent banking sector. Canada actively supports the efforts of countries in the Caribbean region to strengthen anti-money laundering and anti-terrorism financing systems through our participation in the Caribbean Financial Action Task Force, CFATF, and its engagement with the OAS. The issue of de-risking is a priority for the FSB, the FATF, and other international fora. The causes, scale, and impact of this trend are still not fully understood, and these are therefore the current focus of international work in this area by the FSB NFATF. The work being conducted by these organizations will further enhance the international community's understanding of the underlying causes and resulting consequences of de-risking. Since 2010, Canada has provided capacity-building assistance to countries in the hemisphere, particularly in the Caribbean region, to support their efforts to implement money laundering and anti-terrorism financing standards. This assistance has been provided through various fora, including the OAS CCAD, the Caribbean Financial Action Task Force, FinTRAC, the World Bank, and others. The support is designed to assist countries apply FATF standards and anti-money laundering and anti-terrorism financing standards. We note that on the next agenda item, we are to consider and approve a declaration on this topic. However, Mr. Chairman, de-risking is a complex issue that is not fully understood. As I mentioned, work is ongoing, particularly led by the FSB, to examine the issue, further and all of its implications. Therefore, Canada believes that discussing a declaration is premature at this time. We do take note with much appreciation of the presentation offered today and thank the experts for supporting our efforts to better understand this complex challenge. We encourage the Permanent Council to remain seized of this issue and to monitor the work of the FSB and the FATB. If the OAS can contribute positively to advance the work of the FSB and the FATB, the Permanent Council may want to consider specific options at an inappropriate time. In conclusion, rest assured, Mr. Chairman, that Canada supports the efforts of member states to bring key challenges to the attention of the Permanent Council. We encourage the use of the OAS capacities to take appropriate action and make productive contributions to events global goals in the hemisphere. Thank you.
Thank you, Canada. Now I give the floor to the Ambassador of St. Lucia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I start this afternoon with a quotation from President Hollande of France, “Global warming heralds conflict just as clouds herald a storm.” Today, my delegation joins the CARICOM Chair and other members who have raised their voices as we ponder on this very serious issue of de-risking and its potential cataclysmic repercussions for the Caribbean and by extension, the hemisphere. For us, de-risking and the loss of correspondent banking relations heralds financial ruin and massive destabilization of the region. In September 2015, the United Nations approved 17 Sustainable Development Goals to be attained by 2030. In December 2015, a successful COP21 in France exceeded to a difficult but necessary goal of 1.5 to stay alive. The foregoing is evidence that with global involvement, a shared vision, and proper coordination, it is possible to rally for the greater good. Likewise, in the area of financial services, it behoves those of us vulnerable to the external shocks meted out by big banks to collectively join forces to protect the economic welfare of our respective societies. To this end, my delegation thanks the Chair of the Permanent Council for all his dedicated efforts in getting this conversation started in this hemispheric body. It is a conversation in which the presenters shared with us their research, perspectives, and insight. For this, we are grateful and ever more enlightened. My delegation views the issues of de-risking, along with its potentially adverse implications, as being inextricably linked to the sustainable development of the Caribbean region and by extension, the hemisphere. We are fully committed to attaining the Sustainable Development Goals within the allotted timeframe. Nevertheless, we recognize the challenges to achieving these goals with a weakened financial services sector. Mr. Chair, in light of the foregoing and given the significance of the development pillar to the work of this organization, my delegation is of the view that discussion of this topic is not only appropriate but timely, and we look forward to further runs of this dialogue within these walls. I thank you.
Thank you very much, St. Lucia. I give the floor now to Antigua and Barbuda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, let me first begin by stating that my delegation fully supports the statement made this morning by the delegation of Belize on behalf of CARICOM. Mr. Chairman, Antigua and Barbuda is a proposer of this meeting of the Permanent Council and of the draft declaration on the challenges confronting our economic development because the challenges are real and pressing. CARICOM communities, CARICOM countries represent almost half of the membership of this organization. When we add our sister states in Central America that are as affected by these challenges to our financial services sector, we are more than half of this organization's membership. In this context, the OAS and this Permanent Council is the most fitting place for our countries to bring attention to the grave and serious threats to our economies and the well-being of our people. The threats come in many forms. Our region has been wrongly labeled as a high-risk area for financial services. Yet, not one of our countries or our financial institutions have been involved in the cases of money laundering, tax evasion, and terrorism financing that has plagued banks elsewhere in the world. Several countries in our region have been branded as tax havens. But all of our countries have tax information exchange agreements with every major country in the world, and we provide tax information as requested. Further, if all the assets and transactions of all Caribbean financial institutions were added up, they would not amount to 1% of the world's total. In that circumstance, it stretches the imagination beyond endurance to suggest that the majority of cases of tax evasion and money laundering in the world exist in less than 1% of the world's transactions. In any event, Mr. Chairman, as has been pointed out in this council during this session, the Caribbean region has extremely strong regulatory and enforcement legislation and machinery against financial services abuse. The Financial Action Task Force and the Global Forum of the Organization for Cooperation and Development have publicly and formally stated that the countries of our region are in compliance with the highest international standards. Mr. Chairman, Caribbean governments, indigenous banks, and offshore banks located in the Caribbean are extremely concerned about the withdrawal of correspondent relations from Caribbean banks by certain global banks in Europe and North America. Their sense of alarm arises from the fact that if all correspondent banking relations are withdrawn, the region will be isolated from the rest of the world, and we will be unable to carry out the most basic of bank transactions. In many Caribbean countries, there have been a steady decline in such correspondent banking relations, and there is no sign of an early abatement. What has caused the withdrawal of correspondent relations in the Caribbean and other regions is the huge penalties that US banks would have to pay if any incidents of money laundering, terrorism financing, or tax evasion pass through them from their respondent banks. Regulatory and enforcement agencies have dealt harshly with such incidents, creating a strong deterrent to taking risk. The simplest form of de-risking is to terminate correspondent banking relations. Paradoxically, the very rule-making bodies such as the Financial Action Task Force and the Financial Stability Board that created the rules and penalties that now terrify global banks and encourage them to de-risk are themselves becoming concerned about the decline in the correspondent banking relations. Last November, the Financial Stability Board released a statement saying, and I quote, Mr. Chairman, “At the extreme, if an individual bank loses access to correspondent banking services, this may affect its viability, and if a country's bank more generally faces restricted access, then it may affect the functioning of the local banking system. In addition, loss of correspondent banking services can create financial exclusion, particularly where it affects flows such as remittances, which are a key source of fund for people in many developing countries.” fund for people in many developing countries." End of quote. The report rightly observes that, and I quote again here, Mr. Chairman, "The ability to make and receive international payments via correspondent banking is vital for businesses and individuals and for the G20's goal of strong, sustainable, balanced growth." End of quote. Mr. Chairman, in that statement sent to the G20, the FSB stated that a World Bank survey of jurisdictions and banks find that roughly half of the emerging market and developing economies surveyed have experienced a decline in correspondent banking services. Three-quarters of the twenty large correspondent banks participating in the survey responded that the number of correspondent banks' accounts they hold for other banks had declined between the end of 2012 and mid-2015. The FSB report did not end there. Specifically, it stated, and I quote, "The main drivers given by the large banks for their reduction is correspondent banking where concerns about money laundering and terrorism financing risk in the jurisdiction of their counterpart banks." End of quote. Mr. Chairman, the FSB report also stated that, and I quote, "If correspondent bank withdrawals continue, it has the potential to rise to a systemic issue for the regions affected as well as to drive some payment flows underground, which would make it harder for authorities to prevent financial crime and the financing of terrorist activities." End of quote. No member state at this organization could possibly want to encourage such an undesirable For all these reasons, Antigone Barbuda co-sponsored the request for this meeting and the proposed declaration. Under our charter, we, the member states of the OAS, are obliged to cooperate fully among ourselves, independently of the nature of our political, economic, and social system. That is the object that my delegation seeks from this council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Antigone Barbuda. And now I give the floor to the distinguished Ambassador of Venezuela.
Ambassador Sanders, Secretario, Assistant Secretary General, and distinguished panelists of the day today. I want to, in the first place, acknowledge the importance of having brought, on behalf of Chairman Sanders and the rest of the countries that supported this meeting, this issue. Because it is a crucial issue, because it is a real issue, and it gives life to this organization. It seems like a very important issue like this should not have been brought before the Permanent Council. So I think, dear Ambassador Sanders, that you have done a great job bringing this issue here and leaving this issue installed in this organization. This is the type of issue that we should be discussing, global issues that affect us all, and with the advantage that we have a table, not only the countries that suffer, but the countries that cause this situation or this suffering. In the second place, I think we should congratulate the excellent panelists who came, from different ideological, ideological perspectives, but I think they have given us a very big illustration of the severity of this problem. And the majority of the panelists who have been here are citizens of the United States and come to the problem from the United States. So I think that has a fundamental value. Listening to you, I came to think that this issue now of the fight against the money laundering is going to turn into a new war against drugs. That is, we are then going to generate a global problem, whose cause and is here, in this country, just like the problem that always occurred with the fight against drugs, where all the money was wasted, even in the countries, productors or transitors, but that nothing was done in the consumers countries. And furthermore, that war against drugs, at the end, turned into a totally interventionist vision. My country has suffered, I think, almost all the sanctions that the American legislation allows for trafficking of persons, for human rights, whatever. The majority of those sanctions follow laws that had a good intention when they were introduced and were passed, for example, in the Congress, some of them in the Congress of the United States, to try to control the relationship that the United States government had with dictatorships, for example. So there was progressist legislation, to put it that way, that was carried in the American Congress for that. But the legislation remained, and today it applies to anyone who wants to apply it. Because this is full of what we call the double racero, the double moral. It's something that I ask outside, and it's something that I ask inside. So I think this issue, while it is true that it has all these particularities of what the financial, monetary problem, etc., and that, well, I think it is clearly exposed here, it has another front, and that front of returning to unilateralism, to interventionism, and as I say, now I see, before, the world was intervened by drugs. First, communism, then drugs. Now, well, this can turn into an element to go further with the countries, and as they say, even in some cases, generate a policy that does not respond to a universal vision of the problem, as said very well by Mr. Bruce. That is, here should be a universal organization that affects the world that is being affected, and not just from a single element. We always say here, it's a bit rigorous, but I think it can be an example. Here we are in the fight for terrorism. We asked, it will reach forty years this year, 2016, the plane of Cuban aviation flying out of Barbados, where there were killed a number of innocent people, including children, a Olympic Olympic team from Cuba.
Muy importante porque decíamos anteriormente aquí están países que los están sufriendo y países que los están provocando. Entonces este tiene que ser un foro en que ese tema se discuta y se resuelve. Y bueno, quiero reiterar nuevamente el embajador Sander y delegaciones que lo acompañaron. Me parece que es una excelente oportunidad, es valiente, oportuno y le da a este Consejo Permanente la estatura que debe tener en función de los temas que realmente afectan a nuestros países, a su desarrollo, a su lucha por el desarrollo. Muchas gracias.
Presidente, muchas gracias por esas palabras de fuerte apoyo, que creo que toda la Caricom y los países centroamericanos que están involucrados en esto. Muchas gracias. Sin embargo, quiero señalar una vez más que mientras hablamos de Caribe y de los países centroamericanos en relación con este asunto, ningún otro país es inmune de ello y está propagando en América Latina. Ahora le doy el plazo a Paraguay.
Gracias señor presidente, señor secretario general adjunto, señores representantes permanentes, estimados colegas. Por encargo y en representación del grupo Aladi, me permito agradecer las presentaciones relacionadas a los efectos en el hemisferio de las prácticas injustas en la industria de servicios financieros recibidas de parte del distinguido embajador de Belice, en su carácter de coordinador de Caricom, del señor Ryan Pinder, de la doctora Farah Diva Urutia y del señor Bruce Sagatis y finalmente del señor Daniel Mitchell. Al respecto, los miembros del grupo Aladi comprenden la gravedad de la situación y los efectos que podrían causar y deseamos transmitir nuestra solidaridad con los hermanos Estados caribeños. Sobre este tema, las jefas y jefes de estado y de gobierno de América Latina y el Caribe, reunidos en Quito, Ecuador, en ocasión de la cuarta cumbre de la comunidad de Estados latinoamericanos y caribeños CELAC, el 27 de enero de 2016, han emitido la declaración especial 20 sobre la banca corresponsal que me permito leer. Las jefas y jefas de estado y de gobierno de América Latina y del Caribe, reunidas en Quito, Ecuador, en ocasión de la cuarta cumbre de la comunidad de Estados latinoamericanos y caribeños CELAC, el 27 de enero del 2016, expresan su preocupación por la disminución progresiva de las relaciones de corresponsalía bancaria con los países en desarrollo y en particular los del Caribe, a la luz de las recientes acciones de disminución de riesgo por algunas de las más grandes corporaciones de la banca internacional. Aseguran que estas acciones indiscriminadas suponen una amenaza existencial para la estabilidad financiera de los países afectados y socavan sus esfuerzos por alcanzar un crecimiento socioeconómico sostenido y su desarrollo. Además, como se señala en el informe de noviembre de 2015 realizado por la junta de estabilidad financiera FSB para la OCDE, estas acciones también tienen el potencial de direccionar forzosamente a entidades y personas hacia canales menos regulados o no regulados. El impacto potencial en las remesas de la región es de singular preocupación. Istan a la comunidad financiera internacional para que hagan un esfuerzo adicional para resolver los problemas que enfrentan algunos estados miembros debido a la pérdida de la relación de corresponsalía bancaria que presenta profundas dificultades para sus economías nacionales y que afecta a sus instituciones financieras y de comercio exterior. Hacen un llamamiento a la junta de estabilidad financiera, el grupo de acción financiera internacional, el fondo monetario internacional y otras instituciones pertinentes a: primero, examinar las dimensiones e implicancias del tema con especial atención en los Estados caribeños; dos, clarificar los requisitos regulatorios y de supervisión de los bancos globales; tres, acelerar la formulación de guías para asistir a los bancos globales en su evaluación y gestión de riesgos, así como para mejorar la relación y el intercambio de información entre los bancos corresponsales y respondientes; cuatro, apoyar la construcción de capacidades domésticas para atender esta cuestión. Quito, 27 de enero de 2015. Este documento emanado en CELAC ha sido fruto de casi ocho meses de negociación debido a la importancia y complejidad del tema, el cual comprende aspectos políticos y técnicos financieros. A pesar de ello, el mismo ha tenido un apoyo unánime. Deseamos dejar constancia que los estados miembros del grupo Aladi ratificamos el contenido dicho documento. Deseamos de esta misma que esta misma unanimidad obtenga el documento que emane de este Consejo Permanente y por dicha razón consideramos que debido a que el proyecto de declaración desafíos en los servicios financieros y bancarios para el desarrollo en las Américas apenas fue recibido el pasado jueves 24 de marzo en nuestras misiones permanentes cuando la mayoría de nuestros ministerios en capital se llevaban cerrados por ser feriados y recién ha sido, ha podido ser remitido a las capitales el pasado lunes 28, lo cual ha derivado en que varias delegaciones no hayan recibido aún instrucciones sobre el mismo. Señor presidente, los estados miembros del grupo regional Aladi debido a la alta importancia que otorgamos al tema, así como al documento puesto a consideración de este Consejo Permanente, solicitamos respetuosamente se otorgue mayor tiempo para la consideración del mismo de forma que todos podamos realizar aportes, que lo enriquezcan, atendiendo a que debemos hacer consultas a nuestras capitales y obtener una declaración de consenso la cual pueda ser aprobada por unanimidad. Finalmente consideramos que desde la presidencia se podrán realizar las gestiones para establecer un tiempo prudente para que las delegaciones recibamos instrucciones de nuestras capitales y que el proyecto de declaración sea considerado en una próxima sesión del Consejo Permanente. Muchas gracias señor presidente.
Presidente, muchas gracias. Muy buenas tardes a todos los presentes. Un saludo al secretario general adjunto, agradecer al embajador Patrick de Belice por la importante y amplia exposición realizada sobre la situación de los servicios financieros en el Caribe. Asimismo agradezco las presentaciones del señor Pinder, la doctora Urutia, el señor Sagaris y el señor Mitchell por sus exposiciones que nos permitieron profundizar en un tema de importancia para los estados miembros de la región. Hace solamente horas atrás reflexionábamos sobre las graves consecuencias de la esclavitud y el genocidio a las poblaciones nativas en el continente y la necesidad de reparación por las consecuencias y que esta situación sumada a los modelos impuestos en nuestros países han llevado al subdesarrollo de nuestros pueblos. Las actividades y los servicios generados soberanamente por los estados no pueden estar cuartados o ahogados por los poderes bancarios internacionales. Por lo tanto, con la amplia exposición realizada por los expertos, por los invitados el día de hoy hemos podido comprender y observar una vez más que los poderes extraterritoriales pretenden desahuciar el futuro de nuestros pueblos y países imponiendo reglas que ni siquiera las mismas potencias extranjeras las cumplen, como muy bien lo ha mencionado el experto estadounidense. Rechazamos la imposición de medidas que afectan a los servicios, al comercio y fundamentalmente al desarrollo de los países hermanos del hemisferio. Nuestro apoyo y compromiso de acompañamiento constante a los países del Caribe afectados por la problemática expuesta el día de hoy, por lo cual presidente en coherencia con lo ya acordado en la resolución especial de la CELAC aprobado en enero del 2016 por los jefes y jefas de estado de nuestra región y en solidaridad con los países hermanos que son afectados por esta injusticia, por esta injusta situación, apoyamos la declaración presentada el día de hoy al margen de los ajustes y contribuciones que se puedan hacer en esta sesión o las próximas sesiones si es que así decide este plenario. Gracias presidente. Presidente, muchas gracias Bolivia por esa intervención muy útil y ahora le doy el plazo a Trinidad y Tobago.
Gracias señor presidente y buenas tardes. La discusión de hoy ha sido uno de los momentos cruciales de esta organización en mi opinión. Los estados miembros deben congratularse por presentar este tema. Las opiniones pasionantes, informativas y expertas de los cuatro presentadores han ido mucho camino en sensibilizar a los estados miembros sobre esta amenaza inquietante. En particular, el parlamento de los Bahamas notó la ironía de los resultados donde, en mis palabras, las transacciones más peligrosas y transparentes pueden resultar como resultado de lo que estamos viendo hoy. Nosotros apoyamos la idea de que el juego debe ser un nivel uno. Demasiado tiempo, los países pequeños de desarrollo han enfrentado las consecuencias negativas de las decisiones tomadas externamente. ¿Cuánto sacrificio debemos continuar haciendo para cumplir las demandas de otros estados? En la región caribera, tal es nuestro conectividad, que todo lo que suceda en un país inevitablemente tendrá un impacto en otros países. Nuestros inversiones en los servicios financieros cruzan los bordes a nuestro beneficio mutuo. De manera similar, tenemos una responsabilidad colectiva de enfrentar este gran desafío y Trinidad y Tobago desearían desempeñar su papel en resolver este asunto a través de la intervención de todos los interesados, pero en particular nuestros hermanos caricónicos y hermanas. Señor presidente, esperamos recibir las presentaciones que tuvimos esta mañana. Y en conclusión, permítame, sin embargo, enfocarme en una pregunta mientras estoy sentado y escuché las presentaciones de Sagaris y Mitchell, donde hay esta idea de la banca correspondiente, de que esas bancas, las decisiones de esas bancas son sus y solo sus a tomar. Y me pregunté hasta qué punto podemos aceptar este punto de vista. En el mundo de hoy donde se integra y, como dice la señora Sagaris, se crean alianzas estratégicas, ¿estamos para combatir, diría yo, el terrorismo global y la financiación, por ejemplo? Y todos los países se preguntan por qué participar en la resolución de estos problemas. Más a menudo que no, la región caribera responde positivamente, de la misma manera que personas de intereses e instituciones de interés son atacadas por los gobiernos y sus instituciones siguen su camino. ¿No pueden los bancos estar previstos para reconsiderar sus políticas que han impactado a tantos estados miembros? Estaría muy interesado en escuchar las opiniones de el señor Sagaris y Mitchell sobre este importante asunto. Gracias de nuevo por la oportunidad.
Muchas gracias Trinidad y Tobago. Creo que no van a escuchar al doctor Sagaris en ese punto hoy. Tal vez puedan involucrarlo después de que la reunión esté terminada porque creo que estamos más o menos agotando de tiempo. Pero déjeme decirle al consejo cómo proponemos proceder en este punto. Primero de todo, quiero agradecer a nuestro panel distinguido de oradores por todo lo que han traído a este consejo hoy. Y eso es un tiempo de investigación, de trabajo y de conocimiento. Nada de lo que ellos, ninguno de ellos, han dicho hoy ha sido dicho de forma flippante o ha sido dicho sin gran gravedad y seriedad. Estos son personas serias. Han ayudado a este consejo a entender una plagua que ahora está en el mundo. Ha comenzado en el Caribe y en América Central, pero como has oído de otras referencias hechas por otros oradores, la FSB, la Junta Financiera de Estabilidad, ha señalado que no es sólo el Caribe y América Central que están sufriendo la reducción de las relaciones bancarias correspondientes. La plagua está propagando y no hay ningún país aquí, excepto tal vez uno o dos, que es inmune de ello. Llegará a todos nosotros. Y creo que el momento de cortar la cabeza de un serpiente es cuando lo ves, no para esperar a que te bite, pero esa es una consideración que vendrá de tus capitales. Ahora, quiero decir cómo sugiero que proponemos lidiar con la declaración que nos está presentando. Y quiero hacer algunas observaciones sobre la declaración si me permite, ya que mi país era uno de sus propostas. Primero de todo, esta declaración no llama el nombre de ningún país, ninguno. No identifica a ningún banco, ninguno. Lo que hace es que solo pide a este consejo que sus estados miembros se unan para explorar soluciones a este problema que ahora es real y prescindible. Eso es todo lo que hace, nada más y nada menos. Y al hacerlo, invoca la carta OAS por la cual estamos todos unidos y a la cual todos nos suscribimos, que dice que la cooperación económica es esencial para el bienestar común y la prosperidad de los pueblos de este continente. La carta no podría ser más clara. Sin embargo, reconozco que hay delegaciones aquí que desean tener más tiempo para considerar la resolución. Y nosotros en el Caribe, y si le digo, hablo para Panamá, que está en este panel también, somos personas razonables. No trajimos esta declaración aquí porque queríamos derramarla en la nariz de nadie. Trajimos aquí para alertar a la organización de los estados americanos de un enorme problema que ahora desata más de la mitad de sus estados miembros y está propagando. Desde ese punto de vista, creo que este Consejo Permanente ha sido un gran éxito porque duro que no hay nadie en esta sala que no tenga ahora una mejor comprensión de los riesgos que tienen las economías de los países que se poseen por la reducción de las relaciones bancarias correspondientes. Así que a mi costa, esta reunión ha sido un éxito absoluto en sensibilizar a la gente sobre este asunto y te agradecemos todos por participar en ello de la forma que has hecho. Ahora propongo que consideremos esta resolución como establecida en el Consejo Permanente y sugiero que ahora rechacemos la discusión hasta la próxima reunión del Consejo Permanente cuando, con suerte, podamos adoptarla, ya sea en su forma actual o de alguna manera amendada, que comandará el consenso de nuestras delegaciones. Y si eso es de acuerdo contigo, eso es lo que propongo que aceptaremos. Y ya que veo que hay objeciones... Oh, lo siento. ¿Quién? Lo siento, Argentina.
Gracias señor presidente, solo una aclaración. En nuestro calendario de esta semana tenemos otro Consejo Permanente. Entiendo que la idea de hablar del próximo Consejo Permanente que a la que usted se está refiriendo podría ser, por ejemplo, el de la próxima semana. Quisiera una aclaración al respecto, gracias.
Sí, lo hago. No planeaba que debiéramos discutirlo esta tarde, donde ya tenemos un agenda muy lleno. Así que en realidad estaba sugiriendo que fuera a la próxima reunión del Consejo Permanente, lo cual sospecho que estará bajo la dirección del presidente de su país. México, usted tiene el plazo.
En el mismo sentido señor presidente de lo que acaba de señalar Argentina, que el próximo Consejo Permanente es hoy en la tarde, con lo cual no se daría el tiempo que solicitan algunas delegaciones, entonces por siguiente Consejo Permanente estaríamos hablando de la próxima semana cuando asuma sus funciones el presidente embajador de Argentina. Muchas gracias.
Pensé que había dicho eso claramente, pero en cualquier caso, Chile, usted tiene el plazo.
Sí, muchas gracias señor presidente y en primer lugar, como es la primera vez que me dirijo a la sala a agradecer las presentaciones y a usted por haber traído y a Panamá por haber traído este tema ante este Consejo, pero respecto un poco de la metodología que se propone, mi delegación tiene una preocupación. Esto es una materia de mucha sensibilidad y que requiere un estudio importante de parte de técnicos de nuestra capital, no es una decisión política porque puede tener elementos técnicos que nuestros ministerios de hacienda y economía tienen que resolver. Me preocupa que lleguemos al próximo Consejo con un texto a lo mejor modificado, con propuestas y nos veamos forzados en ese Consejo a tener que adoptar una decisión sin realizar nuevamente las consultas de un texto, digamos, que incorpore sugerencias de algunos estados miembros. Quizás debiera haber una especie de reunión previa o entrega con anticipación de las modificaciones que los estados quieran hacer, que se dé un tiempo de unos par de días para poder consultar a los capitales ya de un texto mejorado y ahí poder llegar a un Consejo Permanente con una decisión adoptada. Es por eso importante el liderazgo que usted va a asumir en el sentido de ojalá recibir con anticipación las propuestas de mejora, circular el texto nuevo, mejorado, enriquecido con los suficientes días para poder consultar a las capitales. Gracias señor presidente.
Gracias Columbia, usted tiene el plazo.
Gracias presidente. Muy importante haber traído este tema a esta organización. Especialmente interesante alguno de los apartes de la declaración cuando se reconoce que en este foro político existe el eco, la importancia, los actores que pueden contribuir a resolver situaciones y problemas. Por eso creemos que es sumamente esencial y celebramos que se haya traído este tema porque afecta no solamente a toda una región sino a todo el continente y tiene una incidencia desde luego internacional. Qué bueno que desde tiempo atrás hubiésemos empleado tanto tiempo que se dedica a veces a aspectos de otra índole y lo hubiéramos podido dedicar a temas tan importantes como estos. Por ello celebramos, agradecemos las presentaciones que se han hecho, que son valiosas, serias y en ese orden de ideas celebramos también que se abra este espacio para que cada uno de los países de manera razonable y apropiada puedan expresar sus contribuciones que sin duda alguna han de servir para resolver el tema. Problemas como estos, esas expresiones que asfixian las economías, que afectan las remesas, que afectan las corresponsalías, los sistemas de servicios de países que obviamente construyen sus economías sobre esa base, pero que a veces tocan también con temas tan esenciales como la lucha contra el narcotráfico, contra el terrorismo, contra el intercambio de armas, pues son temas todos globales y transcendentales que exigen una posición de esta organización. De manera que celebramos que se traiga el tema, celebramos que se abra un espacio para un análisis objetivo y esperamos, tenemos la mejor vocación y postura para que además de declaraciones surjan instrumentos reales a través de la OEA que pueda contribuir a ayudar a la solución de estos problemas. Muchas gracias presidente.
Muchas gracias señor presidente y muy rápidamente y en nuestro caso dentro del margen del tiempo que generalmente disponemos, queremos en primer lugar agradecer las presentaciones realizadas en el día de hoy, la verdad que muy sustantivas todas, agradecerle a los panelistas. En segundo lugar señor presidente, nuestra delegación quiere transmitir que entiende la importancia del tema. En tercer lugar señor presidente, a nivel multilateral cuando uno tiene un tema o una resolución es importante y es de norma hacer las consultas previamente. Justamente para venir creo todas las delegaciones preparados. En ese sentido señor presidente y eso lleva a nuestro comentario final, estamos abiertos a esas consultas para avanzar en el tema y como lo dijo la coordinación del grupo Aladi ya hubo una declaración de CELAC al respecto y en ese sentido creo que el darnos en el día de hoy mayor información sobre este tema y a su vez darnos mayor tiempo para consultar con nuestras capitales creo que es muy importante y creo que eso va a ayudar en este tema señor presidente con relación al proyecto de declaración que se acaba de presentar. Muchas gracias.
Gracias mucho. Le doy el plazo a Canadá. Gracias señor presidente. Como has dicho, creo que hemos aprendido mucho hoy sobre este asunto. No es un asunto que yo mismo estuviera familiarizado. Así que muchas gracias por hacerlo. También aprecio su flexibilidad en rechazar la consideración de la declaración que nos está presentando. Me gustaría ecocar los comentarios de mi colega de Chile en el sentido de que este es un asunto muy complejo, muy difícil, muy importante y no querría que nos arrastremos a adoptar una declaración solo porque es un asunto importante. Creo que hay muchas consideraciones que necesitan analizarse y seremos felices de trabajar con el próximo presidente del Consejo Permanente y con los miembros del Consejo para encontrar un tiempo apropiado para continuar nuestra consideración de este asunto, aunque probablemente no sea la próxima semana, pero probablemente a un tiempo más tarde. Gracias.
Le doy el plazo a la delegación de Brasil.
Gracias señor presidente, también para saludar a todos y agradecer la presentación del tema que sin duda alguna y eso es unanimidad, es un tema importante que nos afecta a todos. Da misma manera que el colega de Chile y el colega del Canadá mencionaron, la importancia de se tener un tiempo, el embajador de Uruguay también mencionó eso, la importancia de se tener un tema, un tiempo para mejor discutir el texto de esta declaración. Certamente habrá contribuciones, sugestiones hechas por los países aquí presentes. Yo puedo decir a voz excelente que la delegación de Brasil inclusive ya tendría algunas sugestiones a hacer para precisar un poco mejor algunos puntos de la declaración y en ese sentido estamos abiertos a discutir la cuestión, a conversar sobre ella y creo que en los próximos días podríamos hacer ese trabajo. En ese sentido estamos prontos a contribuir para que se chegue a un texto cerrado de una manera más completa que pueda transmitir exactamente tanto la preocupación que nos vimos aquí hoy pelo lado de quien sofre las consecuencias de esas medidas como da también justa preocupación con la cuestión de la lavaje de dinero y de financiamiento de terrorismo. Por todo esto señor presidente quiero apenas dejar claro que Brasil está pronto a contribuir para esta discusión. Por fin señor presidente, yo gustaría de agradecer a todos teniendo en vista que esta es mi última participación en este Consejo Permanente, yo gustaría de agradecer a todos los colegas, decir que fue realmente un inmenso placer poder trabajar con ustedes a lo largo de estos últimos cuatro años. Quería agradecer a todos también de la secretaria general de la OEA, al señor secretario general adjunto, todo el apoyo que nos dio, al personal técnico, a los intérpretes que sin duda fueron fantásticos y nos ayudaron mucho en ese tiempo todo, en fin, a todos los funcionarios, a los fotógrafos, al personal del café, a todo el mundo que nos dio apoyo y que permitió que nosotros desenvolvésemos un trabajo que me parece fundamental para nuestros países. Yo llegué a esta organización, confieso que un poco discrete de lo que se podría realizar aquí, salgo de la OEA convicto de la capacidad de trabajo que este órgano tiene y de la importancia de las tareas que son desarrolladas aquí para todos nuestros países. Entonces una vez más obrigado a todos y estoy a disposición de todos en Honduras, a donde pretendo llegar próximamente, en fin, espero tener la honra de poder trabajar con ustedes en un futuro próximo. Muchas gracias a todos.
Ahora, habiendo escuchado todos los comentarios de las delegaciones y entendiendo la urgencia por la que más de la mitad de los estados miembros de esta organización quieren que este asunto se discute. be discussed, I will, and I've heard the representations made about the need for time to look at this resolution, therefore, I propose that we consider that the draft declaration be included in the order of business for a meeting of the permanent council in two weeks' time. And I would think that that is more than adequate. Brazil was already ready to speak to it today. So if there is no objection to what I have just said, that is, that the draft declaration will be included in the order of business for a meeting of the permanent council in two weeks' time, no objection to that, I would regard it as agreed. Okay, so agreed. Now, a final point upon which I think we will have absolute unanimity and leave this meeting today in some joy. Tomorrow is the birthday of a very special person and I'm sure all of you would wish to join me in wishing La Celia Prince a happy birthday. Colleagues, we've concluded the consideration of the items on the agenda for this special meeting. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much for your participation. Oh, one last thing. Given the fact that we've gone so late, we will not have the preparatory meeting at 2:30, we'll have it at 3 o'clock instead, and I'm sure a lot of you will be pleased to know we'll start the PC at 3:30. Thank you.